December 16th, 2015, Neshoba Regional School Committee Regular Meeting. We have a packed agenda. Does anybody know if Tom is coming today?
I have not heard that he wasn't, so I assumed that he was.
Alright, so the first order of business is Citizens' Comments. Do we have any? No Citizens' Comments, okay. And our student representative isn't here, so we're gonna skip that and we'll add him when he comes in, if he comes in. The next order of business is an executive session, pardon? Is an executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy for the interim superintendent contract to reconvene into open session. So, I think we're gonna ask for a motion and a second, and then we'll ask our guests to exit. We will only be 15 minutes tops, and then come back in and we'll continue the meeting if that's okay. Alright, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy for the interim superintendent contract to reconvene into open session.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, all those in favor?
All those.
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry, roll call. That's me. Go ahead Nicole.
Lorraine.
Yep.
Kathy Tier.
Yes.
Nicole, yes. Lynn is absent. Mark Jones.
Yes.
Kathy Codian.
Yes.
Neil Darcy.
Alright, it's your name or mine?
It'll be in here.
Okay.
Video is off.
Thank you for coming.
Hi.
Nice.
Janie.
I'm Friday.
Oh, no.
She's an absolute Nazi.
Good.
Who drove the bus?
I need one of these.
Hi Bob.
Hi.
Oh. Kurt and George must be in here.
That's why everyone came in fast, so they could get the seats in back.
They're all gonna clear right out after we ask anyways. Yeah, they're all gonna scurry. Everybody wants to sit here and attend classes.
Did you bring the Secret Santa gift? Did you bring one?
Hi.
I'm gonna need a few more for the next session.
Yeah, we already did some.
I mean, you have probably four hours here.
What you talking about?
How are ya?
Good.
Good. Just got shot in nine years.
That's what I thought.
I don't know, I think everybody has a thing.
Alright, thanks for joining us. Been a long time since I've been nervous presenting in front of a group, and they're all teachers, so... We are going to... We just had an executive session to discuss the negotiation strategy for the interim superintendent contract. And we are going to now vote on that contract. The contract will be made public. Alita, I will get that to you. The contract is between the Neshoba Regional School Committee and Dr. Curtis Bates as the interim. It stipulates a timeframe of January 4th, 2016 until June 30th, 2016. However, there is a qualifier that if by June 1st of 2016, the committee has not identified a qualified candidate for permanent superintendent, the committee agrees to notify the interim superintendent whether it desires to negotiate an extension to the contract. So there is an option for an additional 12 months if we need to, and we appreciate Dr. Bates's ability to do that with us, so thank you for that. And Alita, I will get this to you. Dr. Bates, we'll have you sign it. Do we have a motion on the contract? To accept the contract?
I move we accept the contract and advise the Chair to sign on behalf of the school committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kathy, and does anyone have any conversation? No? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes five to one. Alright. So we're gonna move into the new business section of the agenda, and the first item on that is the NEASC accreditation letter recommendations. In the packet, there is a NEASC accreditation memo that we received from NEASC. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background about NEASC. Not too much, because Dr. Graham's gonna get into presentation, but before he does that, I'm gonna open it up to the committee members for a little bit of discussion. NEASC is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. They are an accreditation organization. They are 130 years old. They're actually the oldest one in the United States. They're a nonprofit organization, serving over 2,000 public and independent schools. They are not a ranking organization, so I think it's important for people, when they look at this, to understand this is not an organization that's gonna rank us. They're actually looking at confidence in our school's purpose, our performance, our human and financial resources. Their goals are to ensure effectiveness, improvement, and public assurance, while respecting the unique mission of every school. So they come in and they do their assessment, and it's an intensive assessment, and the folks in this room all went through it. There are a few pieces of it. Accreditation comes around every 10 years. There are established qualitative standards that consist of a self-study. And that's when, and Dr. Graham can talk to this a little bit more than I can, because you guys went through it. The entire school gets involved in committees to review, analyze, and self-reflect in response to a series of standards that the NEASC organization presents. That, I think, was completed in 2014? Is that right?
Yes.
2014?
Spring 2014.
Okay. Once that's submitted and that is on the district website, peer review is conducted, and that's where a group of folks actually come for a three-day site visit. And those people spend time, they're peers, they're peers from other schools, and they spend time kind of talking with students and staff and parents and school committee and all the stakeholders. They look at every aspect of how the school runs, how it operates. And then, after they do that, they provide a letter to us and let us know, are we gonna continue our accreditation, are we not? Are there areas we need to improve upon? In our accreditation letter, they gave us many, many commendations. There were some big pride moments in there, and if people... I think that it would behoove everyone to read that letter, because there are some pretty impressive things that they say about the culture of the high school, the teacher's commitment to teaching, and the way that the community embraces the high school. There were also areas that they were pleased with. They called those out as well. However, they did tell us that there were some areas of considerable concern that led them to seriously consider putting the district, or that the high school on warning. They didn't put the high school on warning, but only because they're giving us an opportunity to address some things that they're very concerned about. Dr. Graham has already created a committee to start working on that. The school committee is committed to doing what we can to help you, and we will. So, in order for folks watching and listening to understand what I'm talking about, I'm gonna first open it up to folks here, and then Dr. Graham's gonna present, and he can answer some of those questions. Does anybody have any comments, questions, on the letter? No?
Just to commend the high school principal and his staff for their leadership and for the wonderful things that continue to come along with this group of folks and their commitment to our kids.
Did you hear that, Dr. Graham?
I did hear that.
Wonderful. Neil?
I do, so... So I was, I... Great things on here. You guys have all worked really hard. It shows that you guys are rockstars. And that, no, seriously, I mean, it's going through this whole process is not easy. You've done a great job. It's clear. There's just a ton of very positive things. They have seen the evolution between the actual report, things like 21st Century Initiative, the iCare initiative, which were showing things that weren't maybe being the best. You can turn those around for the final report. Kudos. You've done a great job. I was scared as all heck when I saw the warning thing at the end, and to the point that I picked up the phone and I called NEASC to talk with them and find out what's going on, like where are we? And they made me feel a lot better after talking with them. They essentially told me that this was a cultural thing that they felt, and I'm paraphrasing, but almost literally, that may have permeated the entire district. And that's not a good thing. But the landscape has changed, and that is a good thing. And I think we have somebody coming on board tonight that's gonna be able to facilitate things for all the administrators, to make sure that they have whatever tools they need to bring the autonomy to their schools, to give the teachers the powers to make those decisions that they need to be making. And I personally am a big fan of yours, Perry, and I know you're gonna be able to do this. And I think the entire school committee has full faith and confidence that you're gonna turn this around, and it's gonna be a really positive thing. But I really wanna stress that this is also a serious thing that needs to be taken care of by September 1st. No one in the world ever wants to go on warning. The financial implications that this could cause to the real estate values, and just the trickle down everywhere else that this is gonna hit, and hit hard, is a real potential if we don't meet this. But I think we're going to, and I have full faith and confidence with everybody, all the administrators, and with the incoming interim superintendent. So, rock on. I look forward to your plan and your presentation.
So with that introduction, Dr. Graham, please take us through what the letter stated and how we're gonna resolve it, and let us know what you need from us in order to take your school where it needs to be.
Thank you very much. So thanks for having me here tonight. First thing I wanted to do is I wanted to thank all the high school faculty members who are here. I told the department heads last week that I was coming here tonight to speak about NEASC and speak about the letter, and they said, "We wanna come." This has been a staff that has fully embraced the NEASC process and embraced it as a way to try to improve the high school, and there are lots of incredibly positive things happening at Neshoba, and they were mentioned in the letter. They were mentioned in the full NEASC report. But this was, it was their idea to come tonight, so I really appreciate their being here. So thanks for that. So I, there was a PowerPoint presentation that I'd given you, and I wanted to kind of walk through that a little bit. If I'm being too verbose, telling you things that you already know, please stop me and I can hurry up. Thank you, Lorraine, for summarizing the NEASC process. The, one thing that I wanted to point out is that the letter that we get from NEASC isn't the first big thing that we get. We get a full report from the visiting committee. So the visiting committee came and visited us last March. They produced a voluminous report that you all got at the beginning of the school year. I came and presented on in September, and that has tons of qualitative information, and it goes standard by standard. There are seven standards that we're measuring against. And at the end of each standard, there are commendations and recommendations, and then those are all summarized and put together at the end of the full report. The commendations and recommendations that you see in the letter from NEASC are taken directly from that report. So the commendations and recommendations in the letter aren't new, however, they did choose to highlight some specific things. There's a specific process that we follow with NEASC after receiving the letter from NEASC, and this is, every school gets a follow-up letter from NEASC that tells you about your accreditation status. They tell you, they highlight specific commendations that they were especially impressed by. They highlight specific recommendations that they want you to focus on. They also include the special progress report, which I'll come back to. But kind of the standard NEASC follow-up is a formal follow-up committee, and so several members of the follow-up committee are here tonight. We actually have had our first meeting. That follow-up committee works with me to help kind of oversee. There's a lot... The report is very complex. We're a very complex organization. There's lots of things that we're trying to do, so it's not something that six people can just orchestrate, but I want a group of teachers who are invested with me in the long term to be looking at, providing me feedback around, helping to direct me around the areas on which we need to focus. So there's a formal two-year report that I'll do by October of 2017 in that report. I have to take every recommendation that was in the NEASC report, so not just the highlighted ones, but every recommendation, and speak to what action we've taken against those recommendations. In some cases, it might not have been any action NEASC does not expect that within two years, we're going to have addressed everything that they identified. But I have a responsibility to talk about our progress against each of the recommendations in the two-year report, and I need to put special emphasis on the highlighted recommendations that they have in the letter. Then there's also a five-year report that I produce. It's essentially the same sort of thing. I went to a follow-up meeting with NEASC back in, I think, November, October, and kind of a rule of thumb, they said in the two-year report, they expect that roughly maybe a third of the recommendations have been addressed in some sort of substantive way. So one thing that, Lorraine, you alluded to is, and you followed up on this as well, one piece of important information that's in the follow-up letter is the fact that NEASC considered putting us on warning status based on concerns in the standard on school culture and leadership. They did not place us on warning status, but as a result of their consideration, I need to submit a special progress report by September of 2016, and I need to speak specifically to the concerns that they had identified. And if you don't mind, I just wanna briefly read them. There were four bulleted items that they highlighted as areas of specific concern. In my progress report, I need to cite specific examples of building-based responsibilities and decisions that rest with the building principal in order to more effectively manage the instruction expectations and day-to-day running of the school. I need to ensure that building-based decisions follow established procedure and protocol moving through staff, building administration, and school council in order to ensure that they are being made in the best interest of the students and staff. I need to cite specific examples of staff being provided with meaningful roles in the school and district's decision-making processes, and ensure that school priorities are set by the high school principal and that he is provided with sufficient decision-making authority to lead the school. So, in the slide deck that I gave you, I speak to, I think it's the fifth slide, I speak to those specific concerns, and in general, I would say that they fall into some broad categories. One is principal and building autonomy, decision-making processes both at the site and at the district level, and teacher input into decision-making at the school and district levels. And teacher input, I think it's two things. One, having the opportunity to provide input, and then that input being, helping to drive decisions. And I went back through the full NEASC report and looked at the school and culture standard and portion of that report. Again, I would certainly encourage all of you to do that. That's also available on our website. That's something we've disseminated to the whole community. And looked for the specific things that they were speaking to, and so I wanted to highlight those. So first is professional development. So there were concerns in the NEASC report that professional development at the high school was not focusing on specific high school needs. And it was kind of broadly professional development, but also specifically how time is spent on early release days. We have a new teacher evaluation instrument across the Commonwealth. That was a state initiative, and as a result of that new instrument, there are a lot of positive things, things I like about that, but it is a very time-intensive new process, and so the time that administrators spend through the observation process means time that we're not spending on other things. That was an area of concern. Lack of structured collaborative opportunities for teachers. In other words, teachers having the opportunity during the school day to work with each other. We have a seven-period day. I've got two English teachers by chance. They may have the same period free and may choose to collaborate during that time, but it is next to impossible to build that in structurally during the day for all the people who need to collaborate to be able to collaborate and still make sure kids are getting the classes that they want to have. Lack of clarity on which decisions the principal has the autonomy to make, and there was a specific example that they brought up in the NEASC report that I wanted to use to kind of highlight that a little bit, and they brought up the example of honor roll. So at the high school, we calculate honor roll using an unweighted GPA. And with an unweighted GPA, it means that it doesn't matter what level class you take. It doesn't matter whether it's an advanced placement class, or if it's an unlevelled class. An A counts for four points, a B counts for three points, and so on. And all of the classes count as long as they meet every day. We calculate honor roll each quarter. So several years ago, there was some discussion at the school committee level around whether or not we should have consistent honor roll criteria, 6 through 12. And there were different, and are different, honor roll criteria in use at the different middle schools and in use at the high school. There was a lot of conversation around that. One of the ideas that was floated was whether or not the high school should move towards a weighted GPA for honor roll. A weighted GPA is calculated differently. That's only calculated for leveled classes, so unlevelled classes, which is many of our electives' classes, are not included in a weighted GPA. And the weighted GPA gives more weight towards an advanced placement class, an A in advanced placement class counts for more than an A in an accelerated class, and so on. So I took that question to my school council and asked my school council for feedback. Do you believe that we should switch the honor roll towards a weighted GPA? And the school council unanimously recommended, and I agreed with them, that we should not make any changes to the high school honor roll. We should leave it as it is, and so I brought that information back. The conversation continued for another year or so around whether or not there should be changes to the honor roll. And so what the NEASC report highlighted was, whose call is it? If the high school principal believes that we shouldn't make a change, and the high school council believes we shouldn't make a change, why are we still discussing a change? Whose call is it? So, lack of clarity around whose call different things are. And then staff input in the decision-making process is both at the school level and at the district level. So those were, that's kind of drilling down into what NEASC meant with those concerns. So I wanna talk about things that we've done since the NEASC report, since the site visit happened, because the NEASC report that I shared with you all at the beginning of the school year is based on data that were collected back in March. And so a number of things have happened since then, positive things have happened since then. So one, and I thank you all for this, is that we have late starts at the high school now. That has been a tremendous opportunity for teachers to be able to collaborate. We have 12 late starts throughout the school year. We had one today. And that means that teachers have time to work with each other. And that's, I've gotten tremendously positive feedback from staff, from students, and from parents about that. Last year, we started implementing building-based professional development during a, I think, the morning of one of our midterms when we had a late start, during a faculty meeting, and then during one of our early release PD days, we had a series of workshops that teachers could sign up for that were specifically developed in the building, which was wonderful. We're gonna do that again this year. The challenge with that is that we're having to cannibalize time. In order for me to create that time, it means I'm choosing not to do, you know, I'm taking a faculty meeting saying we're not gonna do anything else, we're just gonna focus on this. And that's important, but anytime you cannibalize time, you're taking away from something else. At the beginning of this year, we had a pretty significant number of teachers at the high school join district-level committees. Bless you. Professional Development Committee was one, Teacher Evaluation Committee. So I think that was fantastic, that more high school teachers are joining those committees. I've also tried to extend more opportunities at the site-based level to teachers and push up more decision-making. One example I would give, Neshoba Cup, which has been phenomenal this year. I'm very excited about it. That's really been run primarily by teachers and students. I certainly have had a kind of a facilitative role in that, but that's something that I've really tried to push to teachers and students to own and let them make the decisions about how that works. And you see a number of department heads here tonight. It's been very important to me to try to empower department heads as much as possible, to have them be leaders in the departments and leaders as a collective group in the building. So those are some things that we've done that specifically address concerns identified in the NEASC letter. There are other things, though, that I think we need to continue to do. I think that, and I'll speak specifically to the high school, but I think district-wide, look at more site-based PD autonomy in planning early release agendas. There is certainly a need for collaboration across schools and vertically high school with middle schools. And early release time is an opportunity when everybody has common time to do that. At the same time, I would like to see, at least for the high school, more of the decision-making around what early release time looks like shift towards site-based levels, shift toward me and my team. I spoke about this with the Personnel Subcommittee earlier this week, but I would like to see the department head role be further strengthened. I really see the department heads as people who can be not just facilitators, but true leaders in their department, and I think that giving them more institutional authority will help them in doing that. One of the challenges with a high school is that it's a very flat organization. There are over 90 Unit A staff members, teachers, guidance counselors, special educators, and so on. And they all basically report to me, while Brian and Carrie, my assistant principals, will do evaluations for each. We split it up and have about 30 each. At the end of the day, everybody reports to me. And that means it's possible for me to become a real bottleneck in decision-making processes. And I don't want ideas, creativity, innovation to rest with me. I don't want my ability to come up with ideas to be what limits our organization's ability. And the more that I can push institutional authority to department heads, the more I think we can see creativity and innovation coming from the bottom up. That would address a lot of the different issues that are identified there. And then clarity around areas of responsibility among the principal, superintendent, and school committee. And I was thinking about this, and I wanted to come up with just a couple examples to elucidate what I think is meant by this. And I think more than anything else, the part about warning status and the feedback around school culture and leaderships to initiatives at the high school, they need to be initiatives that I've said, "This is what we need." And it's my responsibility to make sure that with my staff, I have collaborative processes so it's not just me saying that. I'm saying that because I've gotten feedback from my people in making those decisions. So I hope that helps to provide a little bit of context for that. As far as the next steps, I mentioned this already. We have a special progress report that I need to do the beginning of September. The two-year report is due October 1st. Our follow-up committee has already started. I would love to actually have a school committee member be on the follow-up committee that was at our first meeting. One of the members of the follow-up committee recommended that we have a parent representative and a school committee representative to keep you all in the loop on what's happening. I think that's a fantastic idea. I would love to see the department head role be formally strengthened, and that's something that could happen through impact bargaining. I believe the association reached out to the school committee to open that up as a possibility. And I think that clarifying roles and responsibilities is something that we're going to have to do collectively going forward. Obviously, I'm gonna need to work with the interim superintendent, Dr. Bates, and with the new superintendent whenever that person is here, because there's always, I think in any district, there's always tension around what decisions rest at the site level, what decisions rest at the central level, and I think that can be a very productive tension, and there's certainly a need for making sure, because the high school is not an island. The high school is part of the K-12 system. But I think having more clarity around what rests with me, what rests with the high school, versus what rests outside of the high school. So I hope that's somewhat helpful in providing some context. Questions that you all have? Thoughts that you all have? I'm happy to answer or follow up on.
Does anyone have questions? I've got a couple of things, but...
Can I, I just wanna make a comment. Thank you. And thank you because this was short notice, and getting ahead of this is huge, because I think it's important to send the message, and all you here tonight, you're sending a message to the communities too, that, you know, you've got the communities back. And I think it's only fair that we've got yours. And that's really my, so thank you very much for coming. Thank you for doing this and kind of squaring everything.
Of course. My pleasure. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We did start having conversations in our Personnel Subcommittee meeting about the department head role, and we've asked for a couple of things that you're gonna come back with, and we're gonna continue those discussions. And then when Dr. Bates comes in, we'll drag him into those discussions as well. For right now, what I can do is assign a school committee member to work on the follow-up committee work. And I would love to put it out there to anybody who wants to do it, but I'm just gonna tell you that I think Kathy is overloaded.
You think?
And I think Neil is overloaded, but if you had a burning desire and you wanted to take it away from me because I really wanna do it, that would be okay! Does anybody really wanna work on this? Kathy Tier. I know, right? Did I put you in a spot this afternoon or what? You wanna do it? How about this? How about if I get back to you?
I can't do it.
I'm gonna put myself out there. I'm sorry, everybody. I want this. So if everybody's okay with that? You guys alright with that?
Sure.
Dr. Bates, you okay with that?
Sure.
You good with that? Perry?
Yeah, absolutely.
Staff?
Yes.
I'm in.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, so you'll go back to me on that. Anything else? I think we need to vote, because you guys gave me the authority earlier this year.
To do what?
To assign.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, thanks so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you having me.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Nesdeck. Kathy.
Are you friends here? Well, 7 o'clock, didn't we say?
Oh, we're early.
7:00, 7:30. You wanna...
We can jump to Bob Skansky.
I think that's a great idea. Let's jump to Bob.
Hey, let's jump to the Neshoba Regional High School Space Task Force, Nesdeck Demographic Study Request. Bob Skansky is the, what are we going to call you?
I guess I'm the interim chair.
You're the interim chair of the High School Space Task Force that's been looking at space needs and concerns.
Yes. Thank you very much for having me on your busy agenda tonight. I'm here to ask for the school committee to authorize Superintendent King to enter into a contract with Nesdeck for an enrollment study, an enrollment forecast of the school. If you remember back in, I forget if it was August or September, we came to you asking for permission to go out and commission the study. It's part of space needs. We are trying to get our arms around, originally, we were trying to get our arms around, what's the forecast of the population enrollment going to be in 10 years and then in 15 years beyond that? We sent out, we put together a request for proposal, we sent it out, we got three responses back, and the quotations were wildly different in terms of cost. So we called, and we got a couple, we got a couple firms that said, "We're interested in your project, but we don't like your RFP." So we called them up, and we called the other firms up that did respond. And the message we got from all of them was pretty much the same, which is that you guys were too specific in how to do the study. Tell us what you want as a result, you know, in terms of output, but don't tell us how to do the study. So we, I guess we could say we rejected those first round of quotes that we got. We redid the RFP, and we sent it out, and we got four quotes, which were, three of them were from the same firms. We got one new one, and the prices were a little closer together. We're recommending, one of the quotes was way high, up near $39,000. And they were offering to do a whole bunch of stuff that we really didn't see necessary in it. For example, they were going to map the bus routes. You know, in their business, that's a big deal. In our particular school district, that's not a big deal. If they were dealing with the city, that'd be fine. We got, the remaining quotes, one of them is substantially higher than the other two. However, this would be the first enrollment study they've ever done, so they'd be learning how to do it on our dime. Now, of the remaining two, as I said, we're asking to award the contract to Nesdeck. They came in $8,740. We did get one quote that was below that, and we've talked to these firms. The quote that's below that, they want us to collect all the information necessary and send it to them, at which point they will put it into their software and generate the forecasts. So the reason we are selecting Nesdeck, even though it's a couple hundred dollars more, is because, or recommending Nesdeck, even though it's a couple hundred dollars more, is because they will come out to the town, they will talk to town administrators, they will talk to real estate people if we ask them to do that, they will talk to the town planners in each of the town, and they will talk to anybody else, developers or any other significant person, people in each of the three towns. Now, in addition to a forecast for the high school, we will also get, and this is a standard part of our request, so this was, this was asked of all the firms, to provide elementary school forecasts by town. So by school, we will get forecasts of enrollment 10 years out from grades pre-K through 12. And so each of the towns, you know, going forward with this, we will need the cooperation of these town managers from Bolton, Stowe, and Lancaster. The town planners from those towns will need the, some references to other local people in real estate or other prominent businesses that would have enrollment viable information to also collect and give their names to Nesdeck. That's the background. I'm trying to summarize quickly to allow you to move on your agenda, but I'd be happy to answer any questions and ask for your favorable vote.
Questions?
I don't have any.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So the only question I have is, did anybody check with the town administrators, or do we know they're on board of, like, to do the work with this?
No, we haven't, we haven't done that because we don't know the timetable, and also we didn't know if that was actually...
Going to happen.
If you were going, yeah.
Okay.
So no, we haven't contacted anybody in the towns yet specifically about this.
Okay. So if we vote and approve the money, should we just touch base with them or?
Well, you would need to know what the scope of what it is that...
Right, right. So what I would recommend is, if you let me or Kathy from Lancaster or Mark from Stowe, the names of people that they should contact, I mean, the town managers and the town planners are, you know, that's public information.
I could, yeah, I could do it too.
We could pull that together. If there's anybody else that, in the towns that Nesdeck should contact, please let us know, and we'll provide that information to Nesdeck. We formed a little subcommittee on the second RFS effort of myself, Bill Cleary, who manages facilities for the district, and Mark, to rewrite it. And I think we'll work with Nesdeck to make sure they get the information, they follow up with everybody they're supposed to. And they gave us some reports that they've already produced for other districts. We're going to go to them and say, you know, "We like this feature from that report, that feature from that report, and this one over here." And we'll get a robust report for our school district, our towns.
I have two questions. Anyone else have questions before I ask?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Number one, is this budgeted?
That's one of my questions. George, where are we going to get the money?
Well, it's not budgeted, obviously, because it's a, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't anticipated at the time of the, at the time of the budget being made last spring. So, you know, we have to find it somewhere in our contracted services area, and ultimately, you know, it may require a small transfer at the end of the year like we do sometimes.
But you think we can cover it?
Yes, I'm sure we can cover it. Eight thousand dollars.
Eighty-seven, forty, yeah.
And where does the result of the information get us? What does that, what does that do for us? What would we be able to do with that information? Do we need it in order to go talk to the MSBA? What is, what is it that that does?
We do not need it in order to talk to the MSBA. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the MSBA process as I understand it, but I don't want to represent myself as an expert on this. MSBA has their own protocol, their own procedure for figuring out enrollment forecasts. My understanding of it is they look at live birth records and then project out 17, 16, 18 years. We think there are a lot of other factors that would affect the forecast of the elementary schools and ultimately the high schools. I think we owe it to the townspeople for whatever proposal we come up with for remedying issues at the high school, to have, to understand and validate our own forecast of what we think the enrollment is going to be. Because, again, the MSBA's is very limited. We may not come up with the same result that MSBA would. The other thing to realize is, we're used to, we're dealing with an enrollment issue now where we're exceeding capacity, but other forecasts for other school districts are for declining capacity in the area. And we may need to take a heads up on that. The sooner we know about that, the better. Because it really, when you, when you look at what avenues do you want to pursue, if you're going to expand or contract, it dramatically affects the available options before you.
So do you see this as a, possibly like a cost, cost savings step in the long run? I mean, based on the projected results? So if we're looking at substantial declines in population over time, which I, depends on who you're listening to, just on the, that's a potential.
Right.
And if that's the case, is that going to impact how you guys come back to us on the task force with recommendations?
The task force recommendations are going to be focused on what are the issues at the high school. I don't foresee any recommendations on how to remedy them. I don't think they will say, "We need to build this." I don't think it will say, "We need to renovate that space." I think it will say, "There are issues in these spaces. Here's how they affect the students." Again, as we sit here right now, we have students who are sitting in the hallways during study, because there's no classrooms for them. The simple solution to that is, the expensive solution to that, too, is to build more space. But if you think you're going to contract in population five or six years out, that's not the right solution. Then you're going to look at more renovation, and if you're looking at renovation, what spaces do I want to have in five or six or 10 years? So I don't, personally, my view on this is, we want to come up with the right solution, if not the task force, then whatever group follows us, whatever group succeeds us, we want them to come up with the right solution for the towns. And to have a valid population study that's our own is very valuable in addressing the townspeople's, the taxpayers' concerns, instead of just relying on the MSBA's forecast, which seems to me to be very one, seems to be one-dimensional.
But MSBA's forecast is going to dictate what they're going to do with us, or what they're going to suggest that they do with us, or offer to do with us, correct?
To the extent of covering how much they'll, they'll, they'll do a co-pay on.
Okay. So this population study really isn't going to impact any next steps with MSBA. It really would be just for us to understand...
MSBA isn't going to pay, I don't think MSBA will pay any attention to it, and it's not going to affect anything in the MSBA.
So that's important for everyone here to understand, that the value is not to move us to the next step in this with the MSBA.
Right.
The value is for us to have that information, to understand how to plan, you know...
To understand the next step.
Well, right. To under, well, yeah. I mean, either go with the MSBA or you try to do it on your own. I don't know if you want to do that, but that's another discussion for later down the line. But I think you got to think about that.
Yeah, this is not, you know, to expand on it, and just let me know when I run out of time here. This is not a prelude to anything with the MSBA. Whether we move forward with the MSBA or not, we need to know this.
But this gives us the opportunity to say, "The MSBA isn't the only game in town."
Yes.
At least the starting point, right?
Yes. Or, you know, MSBA will allow us, with their forecast, will allow us to do this. We think there are a couple other reasons that we should do some incremental things. And taxpayers, here's the justification for what we're saying.
Okay.
But that's, but that presentation to the taxpayers is four, six years down the road, but it's built on the foundation we're putting in place here.
So this is maybe a tangent on this, but I think an important one. So are they going, I'm just looking at the scope of service here, and are they going to be looking at any of the economic potential impacts to the area? And I'm thinking specifically, like, possibly the migration of, like, EMC to other parts of the world, and if something like that happens, how is that going to affect the population? I mean, it's a substantial workforce. How's that going to...
One of the, one of the interesting things, one of the places that responded to us was MAPC, the Massachusetts Planning Group for our area, who does forecasting on a large economic scale like that. Everybody who responded to this thing said they were going to use MAPIC data. So everybody is going to the same place, MAPIC, to say, "What's your forecast for this area?" You know, can anybody foresee what is going to happen with EMC and how that'll affect us? You know, it's interesting. We talked to someone in Hopkinton who's just, who had recently gone through a MAPIC study. And I don't know if you're familiar with Weston Nurseries, but they sold their property to the town there a few years, not to the town. They sold their property a few years ago, and there are 1,000 houses going into Hopkinton on that property. And Hopkinton has premised a lot of its school budget and capital planning for those thousands of houses, those 1,000 houses going in, and what does, and they don't know, they don't know what EMC, the effect of the EMC change is going to have on them. It could be negligible, it could be substantial. Hopkinton doesn't know. I don't know how much Nesdeck could know, and, but they'll be looking at larger, larger things like that. How precise they can be is, they'll have to explain to us later.
Thank you.
Okay. So the amount of money that you asked for, the $8,730, that's a not to exceed? Is that the actual fee?
That's the contract number.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
Forty, seven, I don't know how specific you get in your votes, but it's 8,740.
Oh, 740.
Yeah.
Pretty much, but that's good. Kathy?
Were population studies like this part of the other building projects in the district?
I wasn't here for those. George, do you know?
I have not, well, we did not have a special study that I'm aware for center school. I believe we relied in that instance on the, on the study done by MSBA, if I recall. I don't recall, we've done the population studies that we do regularly, the enrollment studies that we do, that we had a gentleman here a few months ago. So I think we use that information and the MSBA information, but we did not have a specific additional study like this in that instance. And that was the only, really, probably, I've been here for in the last two years.
But once you, I mean, you can't just contract with the MSBA just for the demographic study, population study, whatever. I mean, that's an SOI, and you're pretty much in at that point, right?
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
And this doesn't commit us to anything with the MSBA at this point anyway?
There's, there's no connection between Nesdeck and MSBA.
So I'd like to comment, just say, this is, gives us the opportunity to have guidance in a population-oriented sense. If we build a building that we regret having in 15 years because we think wrongly that our population is going to grow more than it does, this kind of guidance is very helpful to us to perhaps prevent making an error of that nature. So this is not necessarily about the MSBA, but it's more about helping ourselves to understand what some people think about our future.
But let me just build on that, because that's probably most of, the most important portion of all of this. Without this study, what happens to the population is going to be everybody's opinion. And as we move forward, even if you disagree with the MSBA, it's going to be, how much do you disagree with it? And that's going to, that's going to hold up progress. So what this will do is give us an opportunity to get, if you will, a consensus view among the people from different towns about what the population growth is likely to be in the schools.
Okay. All right. You ready for voting? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we engage with Nesdeck for a population demographic study, as proposed in their proposal.
The, you want to put the number in there?
Um, sure, whatever the number is. I'll take your friendly amendment. Eight thousand and one.
May not exceed 9,000.
Sure.
Can I try again? We have more stuff for you. Eight thousand, 740 dollars. Okay. Is there a second? Kathy, second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
All righty.
Next.
We have a guest?
We have a couple guests.
Yes.
I'm going to, like, cut a cough in between people.
I got to tell you why. You guys just stay on that side. That's all I'm going to say.
No, we're still on, right?
I got it from somebody.
We're still on. I got it from somebody.
That's all good.
It went right down the left line.
Anyone who's watching this can't get exposed to the journalists flying around here. Anyone who's watching this can't get exposed to the journalists flying around here.
No, I can read it. Okay, so we should probably take a five minute recess since everybody left the meeting. Thank you. That was wonderful, everyone, thank you for just getting up and walking away. Thanks, Abby. All right, we're back, and we are going to have a presentation from the NESDEC organization. It's a superintendent search. This presentation is to, I'm gonna turn it over to Kathy in a second, but this presentation is the organization coming to talk to us about opening up a search for permanent superintendent. We currently have an interim superintendent, so I'm gonna turn it over to Kathy, the chair of the personnel subcommittee, to take us through it.
Okay, well, I'm happy to introduce Carolyn Burke and Art Betancourt from NESDEC, and they are on the executive search team. I've let them know that we have all devoured the information that they sent us. And so, they have about a twenty minute presentation, and then they're open to questions. So, I'm gonna invite you to join us.
Thank you.
And-
Is the presentation gonna be a-
They're presenting to the school committee.
No, no, there's no presentation, okay, no, that's, that's-
It's a conversation.
We can do a PowerPoint if you want, but I-
Nope, you don't need to. They don't look at you and say, "This is-"
You PowerPointed out, are you?
Yeah. And thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you for inviting us, it's a pleasure to be here. May I hand, hand some things out?
Sure.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you very much for inviting us. We really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you. We know that the selection of a superintendent is a top priority for any, any school committee, and so we appreciate the time that you're giving us to, to tell you a little bit about our firm. My name is Art Betancourt, I'm the executive director of NESDEC, and I'm here with Carolyn Burke. Carolyn, let me clarify right away, Dr. Carolyn Burke is not my assistant.
I keep telling him that.
She's really not. She's a fully fledged, highly experienced, highly talented search consultant, and she is the consultant that we would recommend for you should you decide to engage NESDEC for the search. Carolyn is presently finishing up a search in Newmarket, New Hampshire, and she has done searches in Houston. We have references for her that you can check out should you begin to, to get into that process. Just by matter of full disclosure, some of you probably know this, but, but I am a former superintendent of Bolton and Stone when it was in nineteen forty-seven. It was a long time ago, but I was superintendent here for six years.
When was this?
This was nineteen eighty-three through nineteen eighty-nine.
We've changed a lot since then, but welcome back.
But I remember the Emerson School. And, but I was superintendent here, and I, I think that, that may have a bearing on, on how you, how you view us or whatever, but I wanted you to know that upfront. But it was a long time ago, and as you say, things have, have changed a lot. So, I am a former superintendent, was, have been a superintendent, was a superintendent in Massachusetts for over twenty years. And prior to that, I was a principal, an assistant principal. When I started my career way back in, well, I won't tell you when, but where. I started, I started way back in, in Newton, Massachusetts, as a science teacher. Carolyn, why don't you introduce yourself?
Okay, I taught in Stone Mass for many years, and, and in all capacity when we were, were building a special ed inclusion program, and then I went to Framingham as an administrator at New George. And we, again, took a school and, and built a fully inclusive program of teaming around there. And I, when I retired from there, I went to work for NESDEC. And I, in fact, had been doing some work with the regional lab and with, with NESDEC, all during the nineties, when, when site-based management was coming in, and we would go out and we would train teams and community groups to work towards consensus on some of the big issues that were, were, um, known. So, now I'm doing such work.
Carolyn is our outreach specialist. She does a lot of work in searches, reaching out to the community, developing, or rather gathering community input, developing candidate profiles, and she does a lot of that work for us, not just in the search area, but she does a lot of community work in our, in our other projects, too. Just to give you a little explanation of NESDEC, NESDEC is a not-for-profit organization. We were formed in nineteen forty-six at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, which makes us sixty-nine years old. We are no longer affiliated with Harvard, we're now a standalone not, not profit, not-for-profit organization. Our mission is to assist schools and school districts to become high-performing organizations. And we do that in basically four ways. We do a lot of planning work, in fact, you take advantage of our enrollment projections. We, I think probably we've done demographic work for you in the past, we do facilities planning, that's, that sort of thing. We work with architects in terms of designing facilities to meet educational program. We do a lot of strategic planning, those sorts of things. We also do a lot of professional development. We've been doing a lot of work in Title IX, helping folks understand what Title IX is all about and, and preparing and training Title IX coordinators, as well as other areas. We do research and development, we have a, really a national presence in what we call team governance, which is helping school committees like you and leaders work together to plan, create goals, work toward the goals, evaluate the goals, and keep that process going. So, we've, we've done a lot of work in that area. We have legal services that are associated with the firm, and we also do what we're here to talk with you this evening about, which is executive search. As far as we know, there is no other firm like us that does more consulting work for public school districts throughout New England than we do. And we're very unique in the fact that we, the entire New England area is our cashman area. We're not, we're not isolated to a single state, we work all over New England. None of our resources go for political purposes, we don't lobby, we don't get into any of that. All of our, all of our money goes directly to focus on services for districts that they need in order to improve or to, to maintain their, their high-performing status. We're part of a national network, and the, there are several, we are called a study council. There are several study councils like us throughout the country. A lot of them are housed in universities, for example, there's one in Seton Hall, there's one in Penn, Penn State, University of Albany, there are a number of them, Syracuse. And what we do is work together as a national network to recruit nationally. They're all nonprofits, which means that we are very, very apt to share information about candidates, whereas private corporations tend not to do that, they tend to keep things isolated and insulated. But we share information, and if we, if we're doing a search, more often than not, we would use our national network to attract candidates to New England. And the national network is, is very effective in that, in that way. Some things that are useful to you, for you to know, we're a New England organization, but we're well-known nationally. In fact, I got an RFP yesterday from Alaska to do a search out there. So, I mean, the name is well-known, in addition to our, our national linkages with the National School Development Council. Another important thing that we, we like to put out there is the fact that we do not recirculate candidates. Every search that we do, we build from the ground up. The applicant pool is built from the ground up, and Carolyn can talk to you more about that. But we work very hard to understand your needs, to understand what the community expectations are, and then to build a candidate profile around that input, helping you as a school committee build a candidate profile that helps everyone understand what it is you're looking for, what are the attributes, what kind of experiences, what kinds of expertise. And it varies from district to district. Some districts, for example, are headed for a major facilities project, and so they might be looking for someone with that kind of background. Others are in, in the midst of major curriculum changes, so they're looking for the specialty in curriculum. So, it varies from district to district. But we work very hard to understand your needs, and then when we're recruiting, and when people are looking at your district to possibly apply to, they have a good understanding of what it is you're looking for, and they can, in a sense, self-select many, on many occasions, so that they know that they're, they're looking at a, a position that's suitable for them as well as meeting your needs. It's very important also for us to design a search around your needs. Although we've given you a proposal, that proposal really represents the typical services that, that are usually requested of us. But, very, if we're engaged for the search, the very first thing we would do with you is to sit down with you and design your search. What elements do you want in your search? How do you want the timing to, to occur? What kind of community involvement do you want in your search? What kind of community outreach do you want in your search? The, the decision-making process, and how does, how does that flow? That would be actually the very first thing that we would do, we would do with you. And having not only a good understanding of your, your, your candidate needs, and also working closely with you to design your search, ultimately, what we really try to do is to get you an individual who's a good fit. And that's really what it's all about, because the superintendent-school committee relationship is really paramount to not only that superintendent's success, but also to your success. So, we work very hard to, to bring you candidates that are well-suited for, for what you're looking for, and well-suited for your future vision of the school district. Now, with that, I think what I'd like to do is, is stop and ask you how we can best help you in terms of what you need to know about us, so that we can proceed down the roads that you would like us to. So, perhaps questions that you may have, or topics that you'd like us to hear?
Questions? Anyone?
Yeah, so, I, I understand that you, in looking at your active tier recruiting chart or whatnot, National School Development Council, I mean, why would we logically, and I'm asking you, why would we logically want to try to recruit from outside of our state given that, you know, pulling somebody from Pennsylvania or Jersey, they could have such different systems, state standards, everything from-
Law.
-school committees or school councils, and, you know what I mean? So, like, why would we wanna pull somebody who'd have to then re-educate themselves with the Massachusetts standards?
Well, I'll turn the question around and, and ask you, why wouldn't you? Because it represents a diversity in your applicant pool that you might wanna take a look at. And I can tell you that, quite honestly, virtually every search we do is a national search, because when the word goes out, it's a NESDEC search, pretty much everyone nationally understands that. And the fact of the matter is, we've attracted some very interesting candidates from other states. And what we found is that although every state is unique, and in fact, even the New England states are unique in, in terms of, you know, the way the, the districts are run and the various laws that, that you have to pay attention to. The fact of the matter is, really bright people, really insightful people, people who can adapt, can come into a new state and, and figure it out fairly soon. For example, we, we did a search on the North Shore about three years ago. We recruited an associate superintendent out of Chicago. That superintendent has been very successful, and in fact, that superintendent has been named now as the superintendent in Holyoke, because Holyoke is in receivership, the state actually tapped him. So, this is an example of, of an out-of-state superintendent who, in a huge urban area, comes to Massachusetts, a very different culture, and is able to make sense of it. The other thing is, a lot of, a lot of, or a fair number of superintendents in other parts of the country have been educated here.
Right.
And have roots here.
Or relocated to there and it wanted them home.
Right, and have roots here. A lot of them, I mean, the colleges and universities in, in this area, in New England, are second to none. And so, a lot of talent leaves New England and goes to another state. But then, when an opportunity arises, they come back to Massachusetts and can do very well. Shelley Berman, who I know, for example, personally, is now over in Andover. Well, Shelley started here in Hudson, as you know, and started in Hudson. He was in Hudson, went to Kentucky, went out to Oregon. We were in touch with him the whole time, came back, and now he's in Andover. So, I mean, that also is a reason, I think, to put the, the word out nationally.
And we've done work with Florida Public Schools, with different schools, districts, and when you go in, they're looking at good teaching and instruction through Charlotte Danielson's lens, as we wish many were. They're looking at the same issues of Vermont was, was light years ahead of Massachusetts in building inclusive environments. They're dealing with the same common core curriculum, all but fifteen percent of any state's curriculum is the, the common. So, the, the issues are, when we're working with teachers sometimes, and I'm working with teachers, and they're talking about, "We, we have to turn the ship around in the harbor and realign with the common core," I say, "Teachers are doing that across the nation. If you go online and look for, there's units developed and lessons developed, and a community of educators now talking about teaching and learning, there's a wealth of resources available that, where it used to be pretty state-focused." So, that whole perspective, and again, you don't want somebody who's not a fit, but what you wanna do is to not close any choices off right now. You cast a net, and then you look through the lens that we develop with you of what you're looking for, and if the person is not somebody you're interested in, no, none harm. I mean, the, the, the network's working for you. But, so you cast the net and you, and you make your choices.
So, I, I just, I see it that if we ended up going with you guys, yeah?
Can you let Kathy go?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize Kathy was-
Not Kathy, just, Kathy. Okay, please.
My question has to do with the support that you provide for the school committee in conducting the ser- for the school committee in conducting the search. We haven't had a superintendent search for 13 years.
Okay.
There's a lot of interest. It seems everybody wants to be on the search committee. We want to keep it contained.
We help with a lot of that, everything.
And so, but part of the everything may be support for the school committee in managing expectations and process. And how does that work? In terms of working with communities, I mean, because this is a three-town district?
Right. The community, the expectation in the community is to have a voice. And we'll talk about how do you give people a voice? You have focus groups, you put the questions online, you provide them access to you. When, when, when we're out working with focus groups, we ask two prompts, but we don't shut off conversation if people go off-topic. But we, we gather all the information from those groups and all the information online, and we, we report it to you in role-alike groups. This is what the administrators are saying, the teachers are saying, the parents are saying, the municipal leaders, whatever groups you choose, students. And these are the themes that are coming up through, and you'll see everything that people are saying. And then, we'll use that information to say, with this in mind, what are we looking for in a superintendent? But people feel involved if you provide forums. You, you give them as much access to you as you can by either filling it out online, going on your website, sending it to us, going to a forum. Then, we, we work with you to set up a representative screening committee. And you can do it, there's so many different ways to do it, from sending out applications and drawing names, but we'll work with you, or asking each organization, the teachers union, provide us to names, however you do it. We'll ask you, what groups would you like represented? And then, how are we going to build a screening committee to make sure you have the representation that you want? And some people might be wearing two hats. An elementary parent who's also a special needs parent, a middle school parent who's also something, so that you, you get the representation.
But when information goes out, does it go out through the chair? The chair conjunction with NESDEC?
Usually the chair.
Point of communication?
Usually, usually, we ask whomever on the board is going to be the spokesperson for the search, because we facilitate the process, it's your search. So, we don't speak for the district, we don't choose the superintendent, we just facilitate the process. You say you want people to have access, we tell you how to do that. You ask for input, we gather it for you. We customize the search and, but it's your search.
The other thing we do is, in, in terms of your reaching out to the community if you need press releases, or if you need pages for your website where you, you want to link to our website, and we'll, we'll talk more about that should, should you engage us. Those are all things that we help you with, so. And it happens all the time. Someone will call and say, Art, you know, the, the press is expecting an update. Can you, can you give us a template that we can use? So, we, we write the template and customize it for you, and then give it to you and say, you can change this any way you like. But these are the main facts that, that people are usually looking for. So, we do a lot of that. And the contact is, is not just at the various stages where we need to meet with you as a school committee. The contact is, is throughout, where you can call us anytime.
You get our cell numbers, you, you know.
And we're very good at texting, we get text messages too, all the time, all the time. So, we're used to that.
Are the, are these communication components that you just mentioned, is that part of your standard service, or is that an add-on?
No, there's no add-on. Everything that you have in that proposal is at a fixed fee. Which is why I go back to saying to this gentleman, we do a national search anyway. You're not paying extra for it. It's part of the package. I don't think we could do other than a national search, because once the word was out there, people would know. So, I mean, that comes with the, with the package. No additional cost, no additional hoopla. We just put the word out, and we'll, we'll, we'll get an applicant pool for you, develop an applicant pool for you that we, we think will be suitable for your needs.
Okay, yeah, you wanted to ask?
I do, just to follow up to what I was asking before. So, when, when we're dealing with out-of-state candidates, and it's something, I, it's, I don't have the knowledge base. I'm just, I'm looking for information on this. How long does it take for a superintendent coming in? Because, you know, I mean, we have some challenges in the districts that, you know, nothing crazy, but, you know, what's the ramp-up time that we're looking at for somebody to be able to get on board, understand the way that the Massachusetts process works intimately? I mean, my understanding is, the typical superintendent isn't there for a, quite a number of years. And so, I think that's really important to, to get our minds wrapped around, like, the compelling reason why we would want to look outside of state.
Well, first of all, keep in mind that by doing a national search, which is what we typically do, that doesn't mean that you're out of a, out of a, an applicant pool of 25 to 20 of them are going to be from out of state.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's a relatively small number. You get quite a few from other New England states. But in terms of getting folks from California, or Illinois, or Kentucky, I mean, those will be relatively, there might not be any. But they'll be relatively, relatively few. And I think, if you're really interested in somebody, what you do is you assess. You know, how long, how long is it going to take this person to ramp up? Our experience is that it takes some work, and that it certainly takes a lot of attention to, to the nuances that you, you face in Massachusetts. But the, the fact of the matter is, a capable person can do it. And it, it can be done well, and it can be done seamlessly. You don't even notice it happening. The other thing I should mention to you is that, you know, even within New England, the differences between the states are incredible. I mean, to be a superintendent, and we deal with all other New England states, so it's, it's probably as much of a, a change for a superintendent from Maine to come to Massachusetts as it is for a superintendent from Oregon to come to Massachusetts, because the two states function so differently. And Connecticut, again, is, is, it's the other side of the spectrum. It's, it's a completely different culture. For, for example, in Connecticut, when you're looking at a school board, or what they call a Board of Education, they're split Democratic and Republican. And that dynamic works at the, at the board level, where you have Democrats and Republicans duking it out on issues at the local level. That's, that's how different it can be. So, even within New England.
We do too, we just don't wear it.
Well, I know, but they do, they do. So, I mean, it's, even in the New England states, the, you cross over a state line, the difference can be, can be huge. And it's just something you, you deal with.
Candidates do it all the time. I mean, we're running searches now with these candidates from all over New England. And you're a region, and sometimes a regional school district, and sometimes candidates from regional school districts in Maine and New Hampshire really get that, whereas another superintendent in Massachusetts might not. So, you're looking for a particular skill set and knowledge base. And, and when you get their applications, you look through that lens, and not so much where they come from at that level. And then, you screen them to see if they have the knowledge and skills you're looking for, and, and.
And as we said, some of them have roots in, in New England anyway. So, I mean, frequently, that's the case.
Okay, I think Nicole has a question.
You talked about the representative screening committee and how, and how that comes together. Just quickly, what do they actually do once they're put together?
Okay, what we do is, we, we switch all of our focus when we're working, and we give them the same attention we, we give the board. We meet with the screening committee. They get all of the applications. They get the, the profile that we've developed with you, the board, and we talk about how to use that profile as a lens, and bring their own experiences to, they represent. But they'll, we'll train them on how to go through the resumes and take a look and determine whom it is that they're interested as a person. And it's all confidential at this stage, so they work as individuals whom they'd like to interview. Then, we come back and reach some, we leave them through an exercise to, to reach consensus about whom they're going to see. We work with them to develop their interview questions, and the format, and the place, and all of that, so that they can hold their screening interviews. Then, we help them determine whom they'd like to send to the board as finalists. So, we, we shepherd them through that entire process. And then, we switch our focus back to the board, and we shepherd you through the same process of looking at the finalists, and how do you write your questions? And where are you going to hold your interviews? And what you can and cannot ask? And how do you get at certain informations? And how do you call your references, and all of that? We, we walk you step-by-step through, and we're available 24/7 to guys, and keep it on schedule, that's another thing that we do.
The other, the other piece of the screening committee that we, and we're somewhat different than some other search organizations. We recommend that the screening committee have at least one school committee member on the screening committee.
Well, that is different.
And frequently, we suggest two, as long as it doesn't represent a core. The reason we do that is because it maintains the continuity of the search and continuity of the understanding that this is the school committee's search and no one else's. The other thing we do is, we don't call it a search committee. We call it a screening committee. Because in essence, what the law is, is saying you can do is you can do a preliminary screening. But that, that committee isn't really searching for anything. We're doing the searching, we're putting together the applicant pool for you. That's, that comes from us. The screening piece is this, what really amounts to a subcommittee. So, with the school committee representation on that subcommittee, there's continuity in terms of what your expectations are as a school committee, in terms of how the screening committee functions. And there's also continuity, although you, you can't really discuss what happens in the screening committee, because it's on an executive session, there are at least a couple of school committee mem-, one, maybe two school committee members, who understand the process from its inception. In other words, from the point at which people were really interviewed and looked at closely, and can follow that through to the school committee level to, to understand how this candidate, for example, got before you as a finalist. So, we think that's very important. Not all firms recommend that, we do.
Mark, you have a question?
I've had the pleasure of witnessing more than one organization react to their previous leader and getting somebody whose reaction to that rather than what they actually needed. I'd like to know how you guide and advise committees who may be still reacting to figure out and actually get what they need as opposed to what they're reacting to.
Very insightful. It happened, it happens a lot.
It does. We want the opposite of what we have, or the same as what we have, basically.
Yeah, it's, and what you do is, you try to keep that question in, in front of people. I think the process of bringing in community input, bringing that community input to you as a school committee and having, with our help, having you understand what that input is telling you about what the community thinks its needs are, is helpful to, to the process. But the other piece of that is keeping that very, and, and it happens a lot, keeping that very question in front of folks who are looking at candidates. And sometimes, it's a very, very strong tendency for school committees to function or react the way you're suggesting. So, you work very hard, understanding that that, that component can be there. You work very hard to have people sort of introspectively say, you know, why am I, why am I saying we need this? Is, is this a reaction, or is this, is this something we really need as a vis-, as a, as a vision toward our future? The other piece of that, just one more thing. The other piece of that is, to keep the, to keep the conversation going forward, we try very hard, for example, in our focus groups, to say, we're really not interested in what happened before. What we want to know is, what do you want to happen in the future? And we do that with the school committee too.
Yeah, I was stepping on, I'm sorry. Standards, if you keep the competencies up, we usually have themes or competencies. This is what, these are the areas that a superintendent needs to be concerned about, you know, in curriculum, whatever the competencies are. And to keep the people's focus on, what do you want to happen in these areas for your district? What do you, what's your vision for what would work in your district? And if you want this to happen, what does the superintendent need to know and be able to do to keep them from focusing on?
An individual.
That's right.
Characteristics versus the individual.
But keeping your eye on the future is one good way to keep yourself out of what you're suggesting.
It's hard, though.
It is hard, it's, it happens a lot.
Any other questions? Nicole, Kathy.
Just a comment, sort of implied in that process is perhaps not a quick reorientation for people.
No, it's not.
It's not necessarily as speedy, even though there may be some urgency, there may be some organizational settling that needs to get done in order to get there.
Could be, it could be. For example, if, if we were to be engaged for this search, we'd probably be living with you for six months.
That was a question to you, was?
120 days is a typical search. But of course, you have things that get in the way of that 120 days, like Christmas, and, you know, vacation periods and that sort of thing. So, the relationship that we have with you is, is quite a long one, actually. And through that, you know, through that ongoing relationship, we try to keep the focus and try to keep people focused and, and moving on.
And it relates a little bit to his point of, how fast does a superintendent sort of hit the ground running? And the other part of the question was, well, how fast do you want him or her to? Because a lot of districts want you to come in and get to know the district, figure out what's here, learn it before you. They don't want somebody that comes in and says, I have the answer, just ask me the question. And that, nobody's looking for that.
One last question, it's on the finances. So, are, would we be paying you as a, like a, on a dedicated retainer exclusive? Or do we pay per for, performance?
It's a fixed fee. So, whatever the fee is that I quoted in the proposal, we would ask you to pay that in two payments. One, 15 days or 20 days into the search, and one at the end of the search.
And there's a warranty?
And there's also warranty. Ours is two years. We very seldom have to use it, but, but on occasion, that can be a very good thing to have in your pocket as well, if, if, for example, things don't go well. And you're talking about relationships, so you, relationships can be tricky. You do the best you can, but you, you have to work at it, and try to get it right, but a relationship can be tricky.
Great, thank you so very much. I think we're good. Do you want to share what next steps are?
Well, I guess we'll have to, we're interviewing another group.
Sure.
And we'll have to deliberate and come to a decision. I think our goal would be to start after the first of the year, soon after the first of the year.
I think that's.
And so.
Great.
Okay, fine.
All right, Carolyn, thank you so very much for coming.
Do you have any questions in the meantime? Feel free to call.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again for inviting us. It's nice to see you.
All right, folks, I think we have a little bit of time.
Thank you.
Oh, all right, well, then we'll wait for the other one.
I thought somebody walked by. Door, I think?
Door?
I don't know.
I think that's where Kathy went to grab her, bring her in. All right, so, if they're here, I don't think I want to jump into another topic. Unless you think the fiscal restraint policy would be important. No, let's wait. You know what, I'm going to jump into another topic. I don't want to sit and wait. District-wide safety and security discussion. So, every time we hear something on the news with another national tragedy, mass shooting, God forbid, another school shooting, I think we're all sitting here, you know, on pins and needles, thinking, oh, thank goodness it's not, but oh my gosh, you feel so bad. So, I received a phone call from a gentleman in Lancaster who has a unique, unique role in that he travels around to the New England states and visits districts all over the New England states. And during that conversation, he had made a couple of suggestions about safety in the schools and across the district that were kind of simple and smart, and wow, I wonder if we could do those kinds of things. So, I, I talked to George to see if we had a district-wide safety committee, and we actually do have one that was recently started by Donna Lindstrom about a year ago, right?
Right, I, yes, yes.
It's a component, it's the Emergency Response Task Force, right?
Right, it's part of the School Health Advisory Club.
So, Donna Lindstrom is the Health Wellness Coordinator in the district. And she and I spoke, and I had suggested, there, right now, the task force is staffed with police and fire and EMS from the three towns. There's a parent, a student, and a little bit of school representation. There's a parent, a student, and a little bit of school representation, but I would like us to consider opening that up, and Donna and I talked about it, and making it more of a 360-degree community effort. So I'm putting out a plea to, and this is with Donna's blessing, I'm putting out a plea to parents in the district, folks in the district, who live in the district, who are interested in serving on a safety task force. And that work would fold into the work that Donna is doing and look at the safety of the schools across the district. I think we do have opportunity. Donna agrees. I know the gentleman I met from Lancaster, I'm thrilled that he reached out. He's got some great ideas. So Donna has asked that if we could get, you know, another parent from each of the three communities, so Stowe, Bolton, Lancaster, at least one parent from each of those communities to reach out to Donna Lindstrom, D. Lindstrom at NRSD.net. It would be wonderful if you had a special interest or expertise in school security and safety, or just a very, a driving need. I think with our school district sandwiched between 495 and 190, these beautiful little New England towns kind of have influence that we're not certain how to handle because we don't know what's coming. So in addition to that, I would like another school committee member to consider serving on this task force.
Do you want to do it?
I was trying to listen.
If you want to do that, go ahead.
Wonderful.
But if Kathy doesn't have the time, I totally would like...
You back her up.
I signed up to do forty costumes yesterday at the middle school, so...
All right.
I'm just going to bring my costumes.
Wonderful. Kathy, will you reach out to, thank you so much for doing that, will you reach out to Donna Lindstrom? And I know that Donna is, we talked about the 360 scope of what she's doing, she's going to be looking for a couple more district teachers and one or two more district staff who have expertise working with disabilities. But I think that that nice, robust, but manageable group of people with, who are the folks that are already there from police, fire, and EMS, is a nice group of people to kind of pull together and come up with some, how can we be as safe as Fort Knox because what we got is more valuable than Fort Knox? So terrific.
You could be the Bolton rep.
All right.
So if no Bolton parents step up, I'd love to step up for that. But I was going to say, if there's an, in case Kathy can't make it, I'd love to...
Then why don't you be Kathy's alternative as a school committee rep? I'd like to grab somebody from the towns who's not on the school committee. That way you guys could coordinate efforts.
Yeah, I'm totally, totally...
Sound good?
Yep, absolutely.
All right.
You good with that?
Not bad.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you so much. And thank you, sir, for bringing that to my attention. Robert, thank you so much.
No, my pleasure.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You're going to get in touch with Donna Lindstrom.
I will do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. No further ado, thank you for waiting. Kathy, you want to introduce our next guests?
Certainly. I'd like to introduce Dorothy Cessar and Glenn Kutcher from MASC. They sent advanced materials to us, I think in November, that we've all had a chance to review, and have provided us with additional information this evening, and so they're going to talk to us for about twenty minutes about their services, the services they can provide us for a superintendent search, and then we'll have about ten minutes for questions. So I'm going to turn it off cue. Thank you for coming, you're welcome.
Well, thank you very much for having us. It's nice to see all of you again. So we're here to talk tonight about our search services, and as Kathy said, you do have some advanced material. MASC has a lot of experience in doing superintendent searches around the state. We have a good number under our belt. And I just want to emphasize some of the things that are very important to us when we do searches for you and walk you a little bit through what we do for you in the process. First of all, we want this to be your search. We're here to make this the search that you want it to be. We'll help you plan the search, resolve any questions, procedures, or protocols that you have. We're here to provide advice throughout the process, and we're here either during the process, we're here most of the time physically, present, and if not, then we're available off-hours, by phone, you know, during the day, weekends, evenings, whenever you need us, whenever you have a question. So in thinking about the search and making it yours, first of all, we talk to you and walk you through the process of preparing for the search. I know that you are very intent on making your search a, very open to the community, very inclusive to the community. So we start off helping you develop, how does that happen in terms of focus groups, in terms of developing a survey that would be like a survey monkey that would go out to the entire community, not just a PAT survey, but one that's very tailored to you and your community. Then using that survey material to help you develop the criteria and the key qualifications that you're looking for in your superintendent. You know, our research and research of others tells us that the best way to get a good match is to make sure that you share the vision and values with your superintendent, so we help you develop the criteria and the qualifications to make sure that you're looking for the right person for you. Then in preparing that, we're helping you also prepare the advertising materials, brochures that you might send out, print materials, online materials that you would send out. And while that's going on, we're also helping you determine the best way to put together a screening committee. That would be an advisory committee to the school committee, bring in that community representation that would help you with the search, helping you put that together, and then also helping orient that committee to the responsibilities that they have, that they're being charged with by the school committee. In the recruiting area, we have a wide basis of candidates to recruit from. We have the ability to recruit from lists and contacts on our own website, on MASC, on the National School Boards Association, and our sister organizations throughout the country. So we have a wide base of recruiting that we can do for you to attract candidates. So we're assisting you in helping do all that advertising and recruitment and get ready to actually start the search process. So then moving into we've advertised, now we kind of sit back and get ready for the next part of the process, which is our collecting the applications for you. So we prepare the applications, we make it available and easy for candidates to find, we gather all the applications to present to the search committee. And then once again, because it's your search, we're looking for your guidance on how you want to handle those applications. Sometimes we're asked to, we give you the applications in the way you would like to receive them, whether it's electronically or in paper format or whatever for the screening committee. And we can give you all the applications and let the screening committee do all the screening. We can do some of the initial screening out for you, if that's your wish, so that you get the applications that most fit your criteria. Or we can take all the applications, give them all to the screening committee with some tiering, where, you know, here's what we see as the top tier for you, and the middle tier, and the bottom tier for you. So throughout that process of the screening committee doing interviews, and throughout the process of the screening committee looking at the applications, we're right there to facilitate, to help in any way we can to guide the screening committee through the process, dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's that they need to have, to work on to have it happen correctly. And we're there on hand to be the liaison with the people that are chosen as the semifinalists to, sometimes we're playing Vanna White through the interview process, making sure that we are the liaison between you and the candidates, making sure that we're present during the screening committee to answer any questions, to help them through the selection process, and to make sure that they are focused on what the school committee has asked them to be focused on throughout the process. And then finally, we have finalists, and we are there to help the school committee and the community through that process and help the candidates through that process. We're working with, we work with the school committee to prepare for that final interview, to prepare the questions, and think about how to get the most out of that interview process, and make sure that you're working to get the best candidate that you can from the finalists. We're helping coordinate the site visits, both the school committee site visit to the candidate's district, and having the candidate come to this district to talk to all the people that they need, that the school committee needs to talk to in their district, as well as who the candidate needs to talk to in this district. Helping provide any resources that we can to the school committee, helping with reference checks as appropriate, and then being present, again, being the liaison with the candidates through that process and being present at the final interview, helping the school committee through the process of interviewing and selection. So once the interviews are over, during the selection process, where we have resources that we can give to you around sample questions, sample interviews, guides on the voting procedure for the superintendent, and after the selection has been made, then we have resources to help you with developing that contract, getting to the final signing on the dotted line, and then follow-up workshops that help the school committee and the superintendent, that new governance team, get established and going on a good basis.
Kind of a service. Do we have any questions? For Dorothy and Glenn? Kathy?
Oh, MASC put out a publication about choosing, I'm getting the name wrong.
Looking for a leader.
Looking for a leader. And it was very direct in terms of what the expectations are, talking about the candidate pool and some of the, it wasn't like a rosy picture, it was very realistic. So given, and I appreciate that, the honest, direct reality of the situation. Now, given that, what are the types of things that you do to help a district like this? I mean, I know what the process is. Be attractive to the very best candidates that are out there, not just in New England, but nationally.
We help you put the best face on the district. And this is a nice place. This is a nice community. This is a desirable superintendency. So people need to understand what is special and unique about Neshoba. So we work with you to figure out how we create that message, get it to the broadest possible audience, and we get it to the broadest possible audience in several ways. Our website, which is superintendents only for searching, gets eighty-five thousand hits a year. So people looking for superintenancies in Massachusetts, look to our website. You get that advertising for free as a member. So if you did nothing, people looking in Massachusetts for superintenancies would find you. There are publications and venues that we use that you may find helpful, Education Week, Education Week Online, some of your local media. We also have a recruiting list of thirteen hundred people that we send notices to. That includes superintendent's offices in the northeast U.S. and the state school boards associations around the rest of the country. Now, they will post your vacancy because we're all a member of the National School Boards Association, National Alliance of Superintendent Searches. So as a courtesy, they'll post your vacancy anyway. It costs you nothing, and it's, it was free last week, it'll be free next week, so it's not, it's not anything that you need to pay for. In addition, we have people that call us all the time, and people that are known to us, and people who've been candidates, who are looking for superintenancies, that we reach out to and alert to the fact that the vacancy exists and tell them. We are on the phone with people looking for superintenancies. I often joke about this, but it's true. We sometimes know that the superintendent is leaving before the school committee does, and sometimes vice versa. So we're in a position to, you know, guide people to where the positions are. I will tell you that because most of the vacancies exist during, due to retirement, the large volume of retirement can be blamed on the state's early retirement system. You get to the age of fifty-seven, you've maxed out, and a lot of people see no reason to stay. We are in touch with our colleagues in other states, especially New England, where there are people who have retired in other states and are still ten years away from a real retirement and want to come back and work in another state. They're an interesting resource. And we get candidates from all over the country. So those are some of the things that we do to help you get the best candidates. I will tell you this, no matter what you do, the people looking for you will find you. There's not a superintendent who's been named publicly as a finalist in Massachusetts that we have not been in touch with. And I'm not bragging, I'm just saying, they're in touch with us because this is what it is. One of our larger communities in eastern Massachusetts, they interviewed eight candidates for the superintendency. Seven of them came through us, even though we weren't involved in the search, because people come to us and say, what's available in Massachusetts? And we will direct them to you, no matter what you choose to do.
I have a quick question for you, and then I'm going to take more. One of your competitors was just here, and they made a statement, and I wondered what your thought was on it. They do not recirculate candidates. So can you talk about that a little bit?
There are search firms who represent candidates. So you hire them, you buy their stable. Now, recirculating candidates, there are some people who apply for multiple superintenances. There are, by the way, our congenital candidates who apply for everything everywhere.
Can you tell us about that?
We will warn you about them. But sometimes there are assertions that, well, who do you have in your stable? And, you know, how do we know that candidate X will apply if candidate X is not part of your organization? So I suspect someone that would say that to you would suggest that they don't have a pool of candidates that they circulate to every other district that's looking for. So I can't speak for anybody other than ours, but in our case, every search starts fresh, and we seek out a pool of candidates. And as Dorothy mentioned to you, search committees like to see all the applications. They like to see them, and it's an element of transparency. It prevents us from deceiving you into suggesting that, well, you had sixty applicants, but we've suggested the ten that we think you should see, which are best. And they basically count telephone calls as an application. Sometimes if you use SchoolSpring, and people can apply by just pushing a button, and you get a lot of junk, you could count those too, I guess. But the search committees often like to see all the applications so that you can see who they are, where they've been, and make your own judgments. Usually, when they ask to see all the applications, they usually ask us to tier them for them. In other words, review them for us, tell us who you think the best ones and most appropriate ones are, give it to us in an envelope. Some of us will look at it, some of us won't. And then after we've made our decisions, and we're coming to make a decision, we'll open up the envelope and see if we agree.
Okay. Questions? Neil?
I have, of course. So when you place us online, how do you differentiate, somebody's doing searches, how do you differentiate us from the, you know, two hundred other school districts that are looking for someone or however many? You know, what is it about us that someone scrolling down, is it just going to say, in the Shulman Regional School District, click on that? I mean, is there information that they're going to get?
They're going to say, the brochure, the advertising brochure that we developed will be right online. So they'll be able to read, if you look at the brochures, the sample brochures.
So this is...
That would be online. So they would be able to see your, the description of your district, the description of your community that you provide, the qualifications that you're looking for, the salary range, the benefits that you offer, and so forth.
Okay. And what, this is a follow-up to that, what are superintendents looking for when they're searching for a school district? I mean, what is it about this brochure that's going to attract a superintendent to that particular district?
Well, we hope the superintendent that is looking for Neshoba is someone who's looking for the type of community, the type of district that you are, and not one of the ones that applies anyplace, but is somewhat discerning in looking at what are the qualifications you're looking for? Is this the type of community? Is this the type of setting that I feel I can be the educational leader of and make a difference in? I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
There's also a unique element. Now, some of the things you see in a brochure are the same. Everybody's looking for a leader. Everybody's looking for a good communicator. Everybody's looking for a, someone who understands the Massachusetts accountability system. But not everybody's looking for someone who can build buildings, or someone who can... But not everybody's looking for someone who can build buildings, or someone who can resolve municipal relations, or someone who can deal with financial issues, or someone who's in Level 4 trying to get to Level 3. So, superintendents will be on the lookout for things that are particularly appropriate, and in their cover letters, if they're smart, they'll indicate, "Here is why I am appropriate for Neshoba Regional School District. I have this skill, and that skill, and that skill, and that's what you're looking for." As opposed to those who might be all things to all people, and you might want to consider them seriously as well. I can tell you what, an element of this, no one in the country is more than two degrees of separation away from Neshoba. Because the superintendent in Santa Fe, New Mexico, is going to call her state superintendent's association and say, "Would you please call Tom Scott? Would you please call our counterpart at MASC? And can you tell us, what's the district like? What's the quality of life like?" They will all be thrilled not to have to sell a bond, a school bond. What's the school committee like? What's the history and the community like? What's the school committee like, in particular? There are some districts that are gonna have a real hard time finding a superintendent because the management of the district has been, has been in underperforming status for a long time as well. And, and the other thing they'll ask is, is there a strong internal candidate? Because if there's a strong internal candidate, that will limit the size of your pool. The other thing that will enhance the size of your pool is the compensation and benefits package, and the willingness of the district to negotiate a flexible fringe benefit package, so that they might be able to achieve in fringe benefits what they can't get on the salary. And all that's, as much of that as you can is out there ahead of time.
If we hire MASC to do our search, who would be working with us? Who would be our consultant?
I would.
Okay.
And I back Dorothy.
I was hoping you'd say that.
I back Dorothy. There are, you have to understand, there are situations when we might be conflicted, or there might be a meeting out of state or someplace out of town, and if Dorothy can't make it, usually that would be the one that would.
We would make sure that someone was here for any time that you needed us to be here.
Okay.
And that's not because you need somebody watching you, it's because...
You like us.
No, 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 no.
You like us.
No, it's, it's actually because school committees and search committees like the confidence of knowing if they have an open meeting question, or a procedural question, or a parliamentary question, or if you're trying to write questions for the candidates, that a live person will be here who can respond to their questions. And the person that you see is the person that you'll get.
Yeah. And there's, there's a lot of little questions that do come up, and it's, it's nice to know that you can get them answered quickly, and have someone who, who has experience with it, and, and can keep you moving forward.
Kathy?
Does that any research criteria? Do you have a method for that? Do you, do you do that with the committee? Do you help?
We do that with the committee. And typically, what happens is the, the survey and the focus groups have happened first, so that you have that information in front of you, as well as your own knowledge about what you're looking for in the superintendent. So, we walk you through, think, you know, looking at what are the qualifications that you see coming out of the community's, community's desires, and what are the qualifications, what are the needs that you see according to where you believe the district needs to be moving, and needs to be. And, you know, as you see, we have plenty of samples that we can show you to kind of get you started and get your thought process going, but it's definitely your criteria that you develop that we would end up being the ones that were advertised. And then when, when we're talking with the search committee about picking the candidates, we're constantly bringing them back to, what you're trying to do is match the candidates to the criteria that have been developed, and, and not, either not compare candidate to candidate, or don't fall off in your own direction, you know, keep bringing you back to the criteria that have been developed, and matching those, thinking about the candidates that you're going to select to interview and select as, as, as fine as this.
Sounds good. Mark, any questions?
Sure. Can you say a little bit about guiding people to, well, to pay attention to their own criteria in the sense that they may be reacting to their previous leaders, and looking for someone either like or unlike that person despite whatever they say they are searching for? And I ask that in the sense that I've witnessed more than one organization do reactive hires and fail to actually get the people that they really needed. And so, I'd like to hear about your guidance to get people in that, pointed in the right direction on, on occasions like that.
I think, you know, some of what needs to happen is, and you can jump in on this too, is you have, you know, a plan or a vision for your district, and you, instead of kind of doing, I think, what, you know, you'll get the candidate that you define. So, you want to make sure you define the right candidate, is, is to think kind of what you're saying. So, you need to continue to go back to that vision and that plan that you have for the district, and determine what are the qualifications that are needed to bring us to where we want the district to go.
When you do focus groups with the community, and with the faculty, and with the school committee, and when you read the online responses, especially when you're doing the live focus groups, and you frame the questions by specifically excluding references to your immediate incumbent, in other words, talk to us about your life experience, what are the good leaders that you've worked with look like, including the previous superintendent. But, but tell us about your whole life experience. Tell us about what happens in your own work experience. Talk to us about that and define what you think is, is what's gonna be good for this district. And that draws out, after a while, when you do enough of these in a particular community, you get a sense of what people are looking for, and you can bring that guidance to the school committee as well, and hope that you can coach the school committee into thinking the same way. There are, I mean, there are districts who have experienced situations that they'd like not to have again, and that can inform them to some extent about what they, what they may wish to probe or move away from. And then there are those that have had great experiences and want to look for the same skills. And that, we draw it out as well. We try to draw it out. If you talk to enough people and read enough online responses, it, it sort of comes, there's an interesting consensus. By the way, we get 10 times as many online responses as we do live people. So, we really, but we work hard to get live people to come out, and, and to talk to the faculty and see what they think as well. It's hard to get people to come out in the evening. We've had early morning sessions for the people dropping kids off, and, you know, we'll spend days in the district, going, meeting with teachers in schools, and then after school, and before dinner, and after dinner. And over the last 10 or 15 years, there's been a marked trend in having fewer people coming out. But online, we have 1,300 online responders in the Massachusetts region. Usually, we have at least 200 to 300 in, in some of the larger districts.
And do you have methodologies to be able to keep these answers pure, so that you're not, you're not getting one individual with multiple responses, et cetera?
Actually, we do.
Okay. All right. I mean, that's a, you know what I mean?
I'll just tell you this about the, the survey capacity. First of all, we can look at the individual responses as well as the aggregate responses, and we can provide them to you. You can see everything that comes in. We also have the capacity to identify the, what is it, the IP number of the computer. We don't know who the people are.
Right.
Unless they self-identify. And the only times when we ever see significant numbers of repeated IP numbers are when people use the high school library to, you know, the, the common computers.
Sure.
And as we track it to that, and that's probably legitimate. Otherwise, we rarely see stuffing of the ballot box.
When we, when we do, when we do the online survey for you and do the focus groups, we give you all the raw material from the surveys, but we also do a summary of the focus groups and the surveys, so you have that as a document to go back to and look at as you're developing your criteria.
You have a question, one more?
Yes, one more. So, can you say a few words about the, your experiences on searches that do not become successful ones, at least on the initial round, and what steps you've taken and gone on again, or extended a search, or researched?
I could tell you stories.
I don't want to know.
I'll talk to you about failures.
Sure. Or just your process and how you, you know, aid people to go on to what they need to do.
If you were to ask about what are some of the things you can do to avoid failure, number one, don't take somebody that you're not totally happy with. Number two, hope I'm not offending anyone, do not let the faculty hijack your search from the school committee. I say that only not because I've had a particular problem anywhere, but because it happens everywhere. So, the faculty members will do what's best for the faculty, which may be what's best for the district, but might not be. So, make sure that your search committee includes a good representation of the community. Make sure that if, that, you know, there's a SPED representative possibly representing the SPED community, that the parent communities are represented. If you have, you know, if a third of the members are faculty members, that might be fine, but if a majority of faculty members, you're gonna have a problem. And, and we have great debates about whether school committee members should serve on the search committee or not.
So, what's your perspective?
Well, I'll tell you mine, Dorothy, you can tell yours. Why don't you, why don't you tell them yours first?
I think you should.
I don't know what you're...
Okay. I don't, I really, I think it's the committee's choice. The, 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 the reason not to do it, the reason not to have school committee members on the search committee is so that there's not school committee, school committee members who come into the final process with much more information about the candidates than the rest of the committee has. So, the whole committee is starting on the same, sort of a level playing field with getting to know the candidates and making the decisions. That it, a lot of it, I think, depends on how much the trust of the full committee has for the people that end up being on the screening committee.
And I would say that even though the Attorney General allows a submajority of the school committee to sit on the search committee, because you have the ability to do confidential screening, and for a committee of seven, I would say you should have at least two members of the school committee, if not three, on the search committee, because they can be the constant eyes and ears of the school committee. They can deliver the message of the school committee, and they can ensure the integrity of the process to make sure that nobody tries to hijack your search.
So, how big is the group that you're talking about here for the search committee?
Smaller is better. Well, it's a lot of cats to her. So, if you have a 20, 21-member search committee, that means 21, 21 individual schedules need to be reconciled. And, you know, what happens is, you all come to the orientation meeting, and sometimes some of the new, the people don't come, and then somebody says, "Well, I can't, I work in Boston, I can't get here before 6 o'clock." And then someone says, "Well, I have something I do on Wednesdays," and then someone says, "I can't do it Saturdays." And the next thing you know, it takes you four weeks to get your interviews done. So...
Something that helps with that is determining the dates that the search committee is going to meet before you solicit participation.
That's a good idea.
And so that you say, you know, if you're not available these dates, don't, don't respond. Things still come up, but it's much easier to work around if you set out the expectation that people have to be available these certain dates for the meetings.
We see, we regularly see search committees of anywhere between 9 and 13 that can work I'm assuming you have a process for appointing them, however committees are appointed. We can advise you on how you might do that.
Yes, you would be doing that.
Well, we wouldn't be appointing the search committee.
No, you would be advising them.
Yes, we, we're happy to, you know, there are easy ways to do this and more complex ways to do it, but it's really helpful if difficult and disagreeable people are not on the search committee. Now, not, we're not talking about people who will challenge, and who will probe, and who will be passionate about what they do, but nothing is less helpful than someone in the search committee who says, "If my candidate doesn't move forward, I am not supporting the work of this group." And that's usually the person who's been difficult from day one, so...
So, do you screen, screening? I would hate to do that, oh gosh.
Well, sometimes school committees will ask people, "If you're interested in being on the search committee, please send a letter of interest to the chair," and then...
I think writing maybe a paragraph on what the expectation is as well, you know, like saying, you know, "This is, this is to do blah, 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 and, you know, you know, we will be only screening to have two remaining," or whatever the number is, "and the expectation is that you will support the committee at that fall." Like, when we joined as school committee members, we were told, you know, "You're, this is a committee, this isn't..."
That's right.
Well, I really didn't know that. We're a committee, and the committee rules is, is what you support.
Yeah.
See all that work you did?
So, yeah, I mean, so when you, when you are soliciting interest in the screening committee, you know, putting out something that sets out the purpose of the committee, the expectation.
With the amount of times and dates.
Yeah, I think that, that would help a lot.
And it's not inappropriate to encourage people in the community who you think would be good to nominate themselves to be on the search committee.
We, I think we've, I've received almost 20 letters, I mean, just emails, without asking.
Similarly, it's not inappropriate to encourage people who may reach out to you as potential candidates.
Right.
If someone, you know, calls you and says, "I've heard you're, I've heard you're on the school committee, I'm interested in applying, can you tell me about the district? You think I should apply?" Absolutely encourage people. You can be our best recruiters, your best recruiters, and members of the community can be your best recruiters. So, I wouldn't discourage them, I'd just be very careful about making sure that people don't hear commitments that you can't make when you're encouraging them to apply. But some of our best candidates come from the community, or are referred to the process by the school committee to whom they've reached out.
Any other questions? You good? Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
All right, Kathy, you're gonna, Dorothy and Glenn, thanks again for coming. We'll be out. All right, let's move on in the agenda. Thank you, George. MCAS versus Park. Kathy, do you want to come back?
I'll be back.
Okay, well, we're gonna start. MCAS versus Park.
So, at the last meeting, I outlined the reasons why I felt that we could likely stay with the MCASs. We do have a choice, and we chose to affirmatively desire to go to Park, otherwise we stay with MCASs, as we did in 2015. We did discuss the length of our recent administrative meeting, and the general, not the general consensus, the complete consensus was that since we were with MCAS last year, to stay with MCAS this year, and await the MCAS 2.0 in 2017. And when we get to MCAS 2.0 in 2017, we'll have the advantage of that year of being held harmless for our accountability, ready as a first year. So, there's no vote necessary unless someone desires to affirmatively go to Park. I just wanted to report back.
Sounds great.
Thoughts? Say, sit.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, George. Yep, wonderful. Thanks for that. And Nicole?
The policy committee just needs this particular policy approved this evening. We, the restraint prevention and behavior support policy. The committee added at the bottom a provision that, or asked that staff familiarize themselves with the policy yearly, and that has been added to the bottom of the policy you'll see there, but it, nothing else changed from the last time that you read this policy.
How is this getting enforced? Because it's very specific. Like, the first line that was scratched out isn't that specific, but the new line that says, required annually via electronic...
says required annually via electronic policy review. So to me, from an IT standpoint, that means that somebody's hitting a button, and that's getting stored and logged somewhere. Is that what's happening?
That's correct, yes.
So if somebody's hitting a button, it's gonna get stored and logged, and if we ever have a policy check, we can find the data.
That's correct. Every year, every employee is required to go through that for sundry policies. And this will be, and this, by adding this line to this particular policy, it just assures that that will be on that annual review. It already is on the annual, it has been, but that just assures it.
That we won't, as a policy. Okay, thank you, George.
Any other questions? Nope, we have motion?
I make a motion to accept the AKA a physical restraint policy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other, last time for questions? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We're gonna move right into subcommittee reports. Mark, do you have more than five minutes? Because I, I think in.
Questions may make it more than five minutes.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
I circulated on paper two reports, and I'll direct your attention to one that's two-sided. And it's titled, "A Subject Survey of Selected Preliminary Estimated Fiscal Year 2017 Expenditures." So besides personnel, the finance committee took a look at a bunch of non-personnel expenses or expenditures that are of interest, and these are all estimates. They're in advance of the actual process of the administration, taking a detailed look at what's likely to happen for the fiscal '17 budget development process. And basically, the, sort of the main, main thing to say about all this is that many of the categories, these categories are substantially, are expected to be substantially similar to the budgeted amount for this current year that we're in, fiscal year 16, except for special education. That's, in best guess at this point, likely to rise somewhere in the vicinity of half million dollars. And that's rather significant in the realm of the non-personnel expenses. It's, it's one of the major increases or likely increases that we're anticipating. And just wanna reiterate again, these are just very preliminary, and as we get more work done, or as the administration does more work on the budget, we'll find out more information about all of these categories and have a better sense of what's likely to be proposed as a comprehensive budget and towards the end of January.
Can we answer questions real quick?
I don't think you're. Basically done for that page.
Oh, you're gonna do the back? Do the whole, do the whole. I would do the whole page, okay. You would do what? So there's another sheet.
There's another sheet.
No, but the back, this is bad.
Oh, so the back page is basically a continuation of the various categories on the front. So I don't really have a whole lot to comment about. The facilities items, actually, the main increase has to do with personnel, which was related in a prior, prior report out. So we just took a look at facilities and as entire department and said, what are the major things that are likely to change there? And turns out, the main non-personnel thing is having to do with the DEP inspections, at least the first guess at this point.
All right, questions, Kathy?
Yeah, I can ask a, a couple, three perhaps. There is, so under, on the first page, under tuition special ed and curriculum, so it says FY 2016 voted, that means that $500,000 was allocated to that line, is that correct?
For special education?
It says tuition, special education and curriculum. FY 16 voted $500,000.
Right, so that's school choice, the next line is school choice out of district assessment. So that's the cost of, of children that are going out of district or expected cost for that year.
Okay.
So the next line, charter school, about $500,000. So those children that are going to charter schools, expecting more or less $500,000 in fiscal year '17.
Okay.
And then the big lump, special education, basically, the main likely expected change there is primarily out of district services for special education kids.
What are the, what are the projections predicated on? What allows you to make the projection?
So let George speak to that.
Yeah, a review of our current caseloads for the special education director of analysis of that case load. Obviously, it's still being, you know, we're still looking at it, and there's obviously, as you know, Kathy, there's always variability in that, as, you know, early as the year goes on, it certainly, you know. So we're looking at those things, but, you know, right now, we're still continuing to trend in a direction that, you know, we haven't trended much in the past, except for the last two years, in a, in a direction that's of concern, no question about it.
Sure. Thank you. Under teaching and learning, what does that encompass? Is that a M.O.?
My question, what is that?
George is gonna tell us.
Good.
We'll see what M.O. we're talking about. It's essentially the operating budget that's presently in force, the teaching and learning includes textbook adoption, it includes curriculum development activities, and it includes the system-wide professional development activities.
And when the budget is put together, this will be expanded so that we can see what's in the individual line items?
Absolutely.
And does that projection include, we haven't talked about the math curriculum adoption, and we'll be making, we'll be hearing the recommendation for that? I'm not familiar with the previous curriculum, but I am aware that many elementary math curriculums have an annual cost associated with consumables.
Correct.
And it can be quite pricey.
Correct.
Is that figured into that?
Yes.
Okay. And then in terms of facilities and technology.
Just that we hear the right last question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Because I know this is an area of concern.
Yeah.
But there's no decision being on where we go, it's just, so therefore, the number would change somewhat depending upon what particular approach we took and what program we purchased. Because we're looking at two programs.
Yes.
So they both have multi-year contracts along the lines you just described.
Yes.
There's also a possibility of a lump sum, I think I would recommend a multi-year contract, at least the first time through.
Sure.
But it would be slightly different price depending on which program it was.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll be getting more information about that.
Absolutely.
But the idea that it's not like you buy a textbook and you keep the textbook for five years, with these programs, there's a.
Is it a subscription? I, I think, for lack of a better term, I think, I guess that would be, I mean, that's not really, I don't think that's what they're exactly marketed, but I, for lack of a better term, it's probably correct to us. It is, I, I find it a little frustrating that that's the case, but that is the way that we do it.
Right, but it can, it's a, it's a lot of money every year. It's not like when you got the textbook.
Right.
And you spend $50,000 so that all the seventh graders can have on that book.
Yeah, the other thing, just keep in mind about some of this, is some of this is already in our budget now, you know, consumables that we purchase each year.
I see, yeah.
So the, so the delta on this won't be as big as the price tag.
Okay.
The price tag is probably somewhere in the forty to fifty thousand range, where we probably spent half, a little bit more than half of that present in various consumables, so there would be some balance.
Okay. Then questions on the facilities and technology? Department salary increases, are those, would they be, if it were custodial or facilities, Unit C?
Yes.
Driven by Unit C?
Yep.
The same for custodial salaries, is that driven by Unit C as well?
Well, I thought that you just asked, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, there's department salaries increase.
Well, the.
The department, oh, go ahead.
Well, yes. Any, the Unit C generally drives those, yes, that's correct. Any, any non-union salaries would have to be approved as part of the overall budget presentation. They'll be budgeted for, for an increase equal to, I believe, the Unit C increases a little bit larger this year. So for our non-union people, all our tech people are non-union.
Okay.
So that's based on a, it's based on a union equivalency, but they're non-union people.
Okay, but if they're non-union, that's still to be determined if there are any increases in the exception.
Absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
So the main purpose of this, just give you an introductory review of budgets so that when it comes, you know the questions that you wanna ask, and you're slightly informed before the whole book shows up in January.
Thank you.
Other questions? Is that pretty much it?
Well, this was good. Who did, did you put this together?
I put that together with all the information that George passed us, as well as a critique of my fellow committee members.
Well, congratulations, guys, this is awesome.
Well, but it's clear.
It makes sense, we get it.
Thank you.
I think, Anne, do you get it?
I haven't misunderstood anything yet, that's all. Mark, is it online?
Well, it's, it's taken a while, you guys did a great job. Thank you, thank you so much.
That's Mark's baby.
So the other page, single-page report, is basically a broad overview of where do things look like on an estimated basis, all things considered. And in many ways, this is likely to be the maximum amount, and that the work of doing the budget will be figuring out to what extent the numbers that are shown here can be reduced in one way or another. So what, in many ways, this is taking the current fiscal year we're in now, fiscal year '16, and just running it forward as if nothing changed. We're assuming there are no retirements, everybody's gonna stay the same, we're not gonna have new hires replacing people who are paid more expensively as longtime staff people. We're assuming for a moment that the member town assessments are the same, just so we can figure out what that might be on a bottom-line basement basis, neither adding or subtracting the personnel amounts, we're not funding other post-employee benefits, and in student populations are substantially the same as well, so we're not having to hire new teachers on that basis. So the big, the big numbers here, this is comparing one budget to the next, is that there's an area that we have non-recurring revenue. We basically used a lot of money from E and D last year, and also from the school choice fund, and in all probability, some pretty significant amount of money is not gonna be able to be found in those two funds this year. And so therefore, we'll be looking for some way to make up an amount, something like $750,000, maybe less, as we figure out how much we can spend out of other revolving funds. So personnel and benefits, basically assuming everything's the same as it was last year, stasis, these are in large part contractual amounts that are likely to change for both the teachers side, the A group, as well as the C bargaining unit. And then the special education, best guess and estimate, that's what you just saw on the page I just showed you, an area of likely increase. So basically, as, as we're getting to look at both as a school committee and as administration, this is kind of the, the big number that we're trying to figure out how to make smaller in terms of increased revenue that we need to fund the operations of the organization. In one way, it's really a roadmap to where are the areas we need to pay attention to in order to figure out what we can do about the rise in expenses and revenue needed.
And what percentage increases is?
So 2.8 out of 50 million, that's in the vicinity of five and a half to 5.7% on gross basis. And it'd be, if it were to be looked at to the towns, since they're funding a smaller fraction of that, it's going to be a larger increase to the, to the towns to fund that amount of money, in terms of percentages.
But I think it's important to point out, like Mark just did, just to reemphasize, reiterate, that it's a starting point.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
I mean, there's many, very critical, which we talked about at our finance committee meeting earlier, very critical data that we don't have, you know, that can sway this, you know. You know, we haven't looked at really enrollment changes as far as, I don't think we even think this was asked at our last meeting. I don't think we have any enrollment issues I'm aware of, except possibly the high schools are still developing, but enrollment issues pushing us up anywhere. So hopefully there'll be some enrollment savings here or there in a couple of places. So things like that will make a big difference. Things like the school choice, the charter school, we don't have those numbers yet, we'll probably have them next week, at least their early looks. So all those things, what's the count of retirement, our health insurance, we talked about that earlier, all those considerations. You know, with our health insurance renewal, it looks like, I did some inquiry this week to see if I can get a little guess at it. I think it looked, I, I don't want, you know, health insurance, you never know, but I think it continues to look a little bit more positive than I might have thought it would. So, you know, all those variables will start coming into play and will impact, as I think, as Mark said, this is just an overview of, you know, where we stand now, back of the envelope, where we starting from, what we're looking at. I, I don't think anybody is suggesting that we come out and present those numbers to the towns.
No, I understand.
Something that would be palpable, sustainable.
On the flip side, we could come in with numbers that are higher, and the key is, we're coming in earlier, and again, this is giving us vision into something that we haven't seen before at this time. And then we could do some really hard, tough work to take these numbers down from where we are, but we're not learning this in late February or something.
Right, or March.
Moving forward.
Yep.
So whatever we're looking at, we're bringing the pain to us, and, I mean, that's what we gotta deal with at that point.
So I think the three bucket reports, and then should be shared with, so we should, as a school committee or a finance committee, send them to the FNCOM.
Definitely.
I think that's like a good next step.
Would that go through the chair or?
I have no preference.
Well, I wonder if, we wanna have a point of view, we don't wanna just send them.
Well, we're trying to be just more data. I think that should have a cover letter with this is preliminary, this is preliminary, this is preliminary.
Why don't you guys put the cover letter together? You're the ones doing the work.
And we'll just explain that we're trying to, you know, do this approach where we're getting a little bit at a time, this is the three buckets, and.
And then can I send it to me so I can take a look at it?
And if you want to send it, that's fine, too.
When's your next finance committee meeting?
At the moment, it's January 6th.
Then you can't put this together.
Can't we just write, can I draft it? Is that legal? Or can Mark draft it?
The problem is deliberation will take a quorum of us to talk to each other as a subcommittee, so we could, we could meet perhaps, you know, early next week, have a short meeting after somebody drafts, so we can figure out.
I'm trying to get me going for a December draft.
Same way.
FYI.
Did I draft for the subcommittee?
Thank you, George.
I could draft for the subcommittee and then just. We could comment to you as the drafter.
I think that's right.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you. Okay.
Like to solve problems.
Man, we like solving problems, don't we? Okay, let's move on.
So you also had a related question about just meetings in relation to the school committee.
Oh, that's right, I did ask you about that.
So I would like you to state.
You want me to say? So, so Mark and I had a conversation because your subcommittee meetings are right before the school committee, and many times, we don't have enough time to digest the informa, to digest the information. And I don't think we're in a period of the year where we could kind of wait the two weeks, so what is it that you wanted to say?
So I think the original plan was to always be two weeks ahead, so when we developed the plan for the year, you would have gotten this, so we would finish one, and we would send it, you know, after the meeting, and then we would review it as a, you would have two weeks, and that's what should be the plan. You need at least a week, in my opinion, to go through it and be able to put any questions. You know, we're, this is no, we're starting it out, so that didn't happen this year, hopefully it'll happen next year, but going forward, I think we're gonna be in flexible meetings, you know, maybe in February anyway, so we can discuss changing the date if, or discuss that at our subcommittee meeting.
That would be great, because I need more time. I mean, I'm rushing around on Wednesdays to.
But just trying to think, what kind of data will we be providing this school committee now that this part of the process is done as well? We should talk about that at our subcommittee meeting, because this was the biggest, we did the biggest part of what we wanted to do. We did the buckets, and Mark helped with pulling together a summary, so I don't know what else we would be.
Because I think we're gonna see that the amount of time we need for your report arts is gonna start to grow and not be the quick two to three minutes. We're gonna have a lot more questions, so.
I kinda see it going the other way, to be honest with you.
Because we're gonna be in budget time, so.
The, the budget, it's, I, well, we need to establish, are we. The budget, it's, well, we need to establish, are we presenting the budget piece by piece or are we presenting the budget?
Like, I guess, guess what's the expectation for the budget meetings this year?
I know, we've got to, we've got to schedule that.
And what's the expectation? Like, we've done it two different ways in the last two different meetings.
Yeah, I don't like, do you, what do you guys think about the, I didn't like this last one. What did you think about it? The one where it was not the workshop, it was the report out?
Would you like to comment?
Of course.
So, I think one of the things that is very interesting, but I'm not sure it gets us, I've said this before, so I'll be brief, but what we want to get is like, we, when we have so much of the long day review of the budget, and we just go over the school, individual site-based budgets, okay? It's great to hear what's going on in the schools, and I think we should continue to do that, and we should continue to do that throughout the year. I'm not sure from a budget point of view, that's where we really want to spend all our effort, because that's really relatively small dollars, very small dollars to our overall budget. And this year in particular is going to be not particularly exciting, I don't think, just because, you know, I don't see those budgets growing too much, so they're not going to be able to come in here and talk about all sorts of new, unfortunately, ideas. They're just going to talk about, you know, keeping, keeping, keeping it going. I just don't see a lot of room in those budgets this year. So, if anything, you know, I still want to be relatively optimistic about this budget, but it's, you know, it has its challenges, as we know, as every budget does, it's not going to be this year. So, I think if, whatever way you decide to investigate the budget in depth, if we could find a format and a presentation and a agenda that would allow us to get to some of the areas of significant concern, significant expense, and that type of thing. I don't know if that makes sense, but...
Well, it makes a great deal of sense. Like, so if we're looking at 85 percent of the budget, and we need to, like, if we, if we need to cut down the overall, you know, budget, and we're only looking at 10 percent of the budget, then it's going to be really hard to do that, if not impossible, right? So, it, the way we've done it in the last two years is just as George said, is psych beast, and that's, it's just not, I think we need a different approach, and maybe two different, you know, meetings, one for psych beast and one for other.
This is my first rodeo, don't ask me.
I do also think your other point is well-taken. You know, we have to have a date that we introduce it, I would propose, you know, mid to late January, we kind of talked about talking about that on January 6th, I think, a little bit at our finance meeting. But, well, we can introduce the entire budget. I mean, I'm still going to need some guidance, I mean, I welcome the opportunity to talk to Kurt, we have a meeting next week, so, you know, a little bit about how he wants to approach it, too, because I mean, obviously, he's superintendent, he's going to have a major role in the, you know, on the flak jacket, too, so to speak, you know? So, I think that's important as to how we go about it, you know, and the ideas he may have from the outside, and how the school committee wants to see it, and how we go about, you know, presenting it. Do we do it, like Neil said, do we do it piecemeal? Do we come out, you know, I still have some questions I think have to be answered in order to make the most effective presentation we can.
So, why don't we, why don't we meet with Kurt on Tuesday, we can start that?
Yeah, I think that...
But I, I think it's going to be scary to think you'd be ready for mid-January.
I mean, I would probably target the January 27th meeting, that would be my desired target. Because I think that gives enough time, again, for Kurt to get involved with it, see it, to talk to the administrators about it a little bit, and then to make the presentation. I think I would, I feel confident I'd be ready in January, so...
Yeah, because I want to give people enough time.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, right. So, I think, I think that's a good date, in that it gives us time internally, and then it gives you time as a committee, it gives you almost two months.
And so, the way that I envision that, George, and I agree, is when I say piecemeal, I don't think that that's the way it should be. I think it should be, we reveal the budget, and then we go back, and then it becomes like the different aspects of the budget that we're looking into, and then we can maybe, you're going to do some deep dives and stuff, and you can bounce things off us and do things like, like, you know, and...
Pull the levers.
Then, right, and then we can start taking a look at specifics. And we have more time to do that once that's all out there, rather than the other way around.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
All right, Kathy, the pain.
I'm just tired.
Okay, let's keep moving then, personnel.
Okay, Dr. Graham mentioned that he had the Personnel Committee on Monday, and basically gave us an overview of his vision for the department head positions, and we talked about establishing qualifications and the criteria that would make someone eligible to do that. Talked about impact bargaining when we get to that point, and he is going to, we asked him to come back to us with some additional information, particularly regarding how school districts handle our department chairs for elective areas where you might have fewer people in the department, so there's not parity between core academic areas.
Aren't they going to give us job descriptions, too?
We have a draft of a job description that he and Monica developed, so...
Did they incorporate that, too?
No, I have to put all the information together. He sent the docs, but I'll put it together with the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, and our next meeting will be on January 11th.
Okay, thank you. Nicole, policy?
The Policy Committee met a week ago today, seems like several months ago, doesn't it?
It does.
In addition to passing on the policy that you guys approved tonight, thank you for doing that, there were several more policies that we have ready for you, but you can thank us, we are, we'll put them on a different agenda. We thought a three-hour, three-and-a-half hour agenda was enough, so, so there's a couple more coming to you. In addition to that, we had several parents join us about the life-threatening allergy policy, their concerns on implementation, and then that there was one or two word changes from the original policy that they worked on to the policy that we approved, and talked to us about, about those concerns. They will be coming back to our meeting on the 6th of January. Anything else you would like to add, George, about that?
No, I think that I also met with the group that came to the Policy Subcommittee meeting the day before, I believe it was the day before, to talk about their overall concerns about some of the policy implementation. I think overall, it was a, it was a productive meeting, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Can I add one quick one to that, too? So, with regards to the LTA group, and what they're, what they're claiming is that they reviewed the policy with everyone, they agreed upon the policy that was going to be submitted and brought to the school committee for approval. And there was a policy that was brought to the school committee for approval. However, the line, including designation of the classroom as allergen-free as necessary, was struck from the policy. So, when the policy was voted upon, it was not, that verbiage was no longer included in the policy, unannounced to the LTA committee. And that, that verbiage...
Did the school committee know that it was struck?
I'm not clear on that, that you have to go back to the minutes, which, when I went back on, don't cover it.
You and I were part of that policy, and I don't remember us.
We didn't strike it.
That verbiage exists in Acton Boxborough Public Schools, Concorde Carlisle Regional Schools, Harvard Public Schools, Lexington Public Schools, Subgrade Public Schools, but not our school district, because we removed it. And that's actually one of the sources of confusion that's taken place among faculty and staff in the implementation of the policy.
So, have you folks, have you folks taken a look at it and made, or do you have a recommendation?
So, Donna Lindstrom's coming in on the 6th to explain to us, perhaps, like, we haven't been identified who removed that verbiage, and Donna Lindstrom's going to hopefully shed some light on this with us and explain how we can get to where we need to.
Okay, so, thank you for that. Why don't we, let you meet on the 6th?
Thank you.
And then come back and, with your recommendation on what needs to happen with that, Paulson. Okay. Space study, Lynn isn't here, Bob was just here. Is there anything more that we need?
Basic news is going to be drafting final reports in anticipation of coming to the school committee in January to describe...
Well, when will that, when will, because I'm looking at calendars here, and when will that?
I thought that he was, we were going to do something on the 6th to show that, to report the summary that has been put together.
On January 6th?
I think so, and then...
I think so, although he, Bob Zikansky may or may not have a conflict that date, so, so there's some question whether it be the 6th or the 13th as target dates to ask each year for the, for the opportunity to come.
Okay, I'll wait to hear from him.
Does that sound right to you, Kathy?
It does, and there was discussion of the statement of interest and whether or not, what's appropriate in terms of when and whether to bring it to the school committee, so I think it's still...
When's your next meeting?
Uh, January 7th.
I want to go to that.
We look forward to that.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Good?
Yes.
Good?
No CPAC?
I'm sorry, I didn't contact CPAC this week.
That's okay.
That's my fault.
That's all right. Neil, Tech Committee.
Um, yeah, it was, it was a good meeting. We didn't cover a ton, but we were going over essentially the goals in defining them, and I think there is a lot of excitement among the, the Tech Committee people. There's, there's, I think, growing input and interest in making sure that this is all done the best, you know, best practice way possible. Succi and Cynthia Larson were just doing a really good job addressing various concerns and revisiting things and leading the discussion. And I know when we spoke with them, that they were going to try to get any budget impacting things to us ASAP, sooner than later, particularly in the case of personal development, because as the digital learning initiative's rolled out, you're going to have a little bit of a learning curve that's going to be larger on the front end, and may require more resources for the personal development time. So, there is a wishlist that Cynthia's putting together, and then we'll go from there.
Well, that's encouraging to hear that, not that they're bringing a wishlist, but, I mean, we need to know, but I think it's encouraging that where we were last year to where we are now this year with discussion around technology.
They're also looking to accelerate, actually, the meetings in order to achieve some of these, these goals a little quicker, in recognition that the budget season's approaching and so forth. They're trying to, they're trying very hard to meet the needs that the budget's going to be.
That's fine, that's good. All right, thank you so much, Neil. Okay, George, Superintendent's report.
I'll be brief, given the hour, but I just a few items, most of you can just read. I'll talk, the Accountability Report from the state came out last week, this was a little later than normal. This is based on the MCAS testing from last spring, they had to wait till the Park testing was all computed. I believe that's the reason they waited so late, even though all the Park districts, I understand they were held harmless, so I'm not quite sure why, but they, they gave, I guess you could move up, maybe that was the case on Park. But anyways, the case is, two of our schools advanced to Level One, the Regional High School and Center School, both have been Level Two schools, and they removed, they moved forward to Level One, so that was good work there. The balance of the schools remained at their current levels, and so now five of our six schools are now at Level One. The district overall does remain at Level Two, Sawyer's still at Level Two, the overall performance of Sawyer was good. It's, it's a subgroup issue with our high-needs students that causes that school to fall into a Level Two school. Obviously, we continue to work on that area, it's an area we've been aware of and working on, and Sawyer has a subgroup, some of the schools don't have subgroups, so therefore, that's the, that's the reason that school is at Level Two, but their overall performance is very, very good.
So, those schools, all of the five schools making it to Level One is kudos to the teachers and the kids.
Yep.
That's what George said, and I mean, it's absolutely kudos to the teachers and the kids.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, so, it's, it's good to see. Let's see, I think your analysis has been pretty much talked about. The Golden Lease, I don't know if you want to say anything about that, but we're in the process of trying to work it out so that we can get the second floor of this building, third floor of this building available to us, so we can move our technology department from the high school, not our, not our systems, but our people, from the high school up to the third floor here, that will allow us to spread out those two rooms in the high school for high school use. So, we just need to draw a couple I's and cross a couple T's. I have to mention, the Super Bowl was great at Gillette Stadium, I don't know how many of you, any of you were there, but it was really a great victory for our high school team. We won the smallest schools in all Division Two, and to go in there and win the state championship with a major team score is truly impressive, it was really great. Because they'd been there a couple of times before, but this year was a little different, because there was a true state championship from all, so they played at Eastern Mass School, which was an excellent program, I mean. And if anything, it was there in the first eight seconds, we were behind 6-0, and we fumbled the opening kickoff into a touchdown, so some of us thought, us less faithful people, thought it might be a long night, but it worked out, it worked out very well, and really a lot, great, it was really, really, really a fun night. So, congratulations, congratulations to Coach Tucker and the entire team, it was really good. Family and community engagement on note, I just want to mention this, I wasn't there unfortunately, because I was with Donna Lindstrom at a statewide meeting in Marlboro about, for districts to have received a health grant, so we had to go through that. But Joan Finger made a presentation to the Hales School students during their advisory period last week about the Unified Sports, and it was really great, and from everybody there telling me, it was great to see the reaction, the desire of kids to get involved. And Joan does a great job with that program, deserves a lot of credit for that, and it was nice to see her put this program together, we had a bunch of high school students come over there and talk to the kids, high school students who have worked in the program. So, that is that, I think, for now.
Thank you, George. We started something new with correspondence and with, with concern over the past couple of months with what's being posted, what's not being posted. So, one of the Lancaster Stowe Selectmen reached out to me and shared their approach to posting correspondence, and I actually thought it was a great idea, so I'm, we're trying it, Alina went ahead and put it up for us for this meeting, so I want everybody to take a look at it and provide feedback, and I'd be interested in the community's feedback as well. But rather than posting every single piece, or some pieces, or no pieces, or lists of things, what we're going to try to do is post just one line about what the piece was, what the concern was, to whom it was delivered, and who it came from. And I think that way, I mean, if people want the full documentation, they can contact Alina, but this way you can kind of read through what all of the issues were. I like their approach, so let's give it a shot, try it for a few meetings and see what you guys think, and see if we get feedback from the community, okay? So, this would assume that if you get something, you'd get it to Alina.
No.
Consent agenda, consent agenda. So, we're, I hope everybody had a chance to read through the November 23rd and December 2nd meeting minutes, all good? Warrants for December 18th, finance is good? Okay, thank you. Items for next agenda, um, we, uh, we're going to talk about, I think I'm going to ask Donna Lindstrom to come in. Talk about her, she talked to me about it yesterday, talk to us about her, the work that they're doing?
Oh, safety stuff? Oh, sure, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Does anybody else have anything they want, they would like to consider adding?
What's on our list, you have a list of what's on our list?
Yeah, we're, we're off track with the list.
Oh, no, no, I know that. Just, if you have a list of what's on our list, if you could refresh our memory.
So, what's on the list is on the site, and I can't find it.
Oh, it's on, that's okay.
What I want you to do is send me agenda items if there's something burning, and I think Kathy, oh, one of the things we have to put on there, we have to talk about scheduling our meetings.
Oh, yes, okay.
Right?
Yes, exactly.
And the school committee meetings, we might have to tweak the dates for seven events in January, but I'll get you information.
You can make a decision on the next meeting.
I was just going to ask that, yeah.
Okay.
Do we need, well, is there any reason why we can't decide tonight?
We could.
Because I'd like really to, to get this going.
Let's do it.
What discussion, does anybody have any, um...
Do you have any concerns, either way, preferences?
I think they were both very good, very conscientious, and I read through the, there's... I think they're all very good, very detailed, and I read through the, there's, there's not much of a cost difference in both our cost proposals.
I know, I actually was kind of impressed with, um, NASDAQ, but.
One of the, well, the, just, I've got the, the comparative chart I put together. So MASC is ninety-five hundred dollars, and NASDAQ is twelve-nine-six-six. One big difference from my point of view is, I mean, the both offer warranties, there are a lot of things that are similar, um, that MASC will attend all interview sessions acting as a liaison between the candidates and the committee. NASDAQ will conduct a workshop for the screening committee to assist them in interviewing and selection process. The consultant does not attend interviews. I real, (laugh) I just, it would be nice, I think, to have a, like, even a facilitator, somebody there, a guy.
A guy.
Um, I think they both had good answers about their search process. Um, there are a lot of similarities. Um, I've been in districts that have used both.
I like the fact that MASC knows us. They know our district.
And they like us anyway.
And they still like us.
I was leaning towards MASC mostly because of Kathy, what you noted, and also, um, in the note that the focus groups that, that were limited and, and, um, we're not limited in the MASC.
That's right.
And, and, and maybe we, that's all we would have, but it just, it just left it a little bit more open.
Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts?
I thought that the, uh, mass presentation detailed a little bit more of the process and what's going to happen. Um, it maybe was because I asked the question, but I felt that I was, there was a lot more bigger scale talk with NASDAQ, um, and not necessarily as much specifics as what's going to happen. So I felt like more of what I would be looking for, uh, to have answered came from ask this evening. But on the price, you have ninety-five hundred dollars. I did notice that we also have to pay for our own printing of the brochures, that would be twenty-five hundred dollars.
But isn't the brochure online?
It is, but if we, so, there was a couple other costs, so.
Right, there were, there were some upgrades if you wanted.
Well, they do, they probably will, but there's other.
Do you have perspective on this? Can, 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 excuse me, Kurt, would you like to provide?
They, both of them will send out flyers to all superintendents in the state. So all superintendents get any openings, and it comes in the mail.
Oh.
So they, they will get a hard copy of the.
Oh.
So.
So they do get a hard copy.
Both of them do, yes.
Yeah, and it caps out at twenty-five hundred on the printing cost. It says no more than. So they're, they're compatible price.
Right, the prices are really compatible. Add up all the lineages, because one is total and one is linear.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
One comment I had, so perhaps inadvertently, we explored more their sort of committee-oriented process in terms of helping the screening committee and the school committee, and for whatever reason we failed, didn't have the opportunity to quiz NASDAQ about the same, um, in, in the, same detail as we did, um, MASC.
But I asked the question about.
I don't know, I don't, I thought I got good information from NASDAQ about the screening.
And then. I think they had different, and, in their, in their responses, in their presentations, different emphasis, um, but I did.
So perhaps one interpretation is their, NASDAQ is not quite as much a committee handover as MASC is offering to be, is that, is that a fair, fair interpretation?
Well, if they'll hold you in, then it'll cost you.
Yeah.
Right.
But no, I mean, I, I don't know, um, inter, um.
I have a familiarity, and I.
I think they hit the ground running with dark.
Dorothy's worked on this for over a year closely.
Well, that is a big plus, because there is an idea or an understanding of, you know,
How the district works.
The challenges that we are looking to address with the district, how it works, and, you know.
She did the Bowles one. I wonder if she knows on the Bowles.
Yeah.
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 But then coupled with the, like you brought up, the multiple focus groups, I like that because we may get responses that we have no idea or not predicting whatsoever that may come in, and now we need to really put a focus group together on that, and if we're capped out at one level, you know, then we can't necessarily be as thorough in the vetting on that side of things as we may want to be.
And nimble, yeah.
Well, I suspect if we want something, we can elect to purchase it.
Right, you can, I'm sure.
We're not vetted for deciding to do something that we wanna do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, what do you wanna do?
So one, one question I have for everybody is, do people have any sort of follow-up questions, not that I do, that they would, that might be useful to them if they didn't decide tonight? Are there any, anything people wanted to know?
For, I don't know how you feel, folks feel, I'm good, I mean, I'm ready.
I'm ready.
But, I mean, I think everybody needs to feel like they have had a chance to ask any questions that they might have.
In my real life, I am very familiar with recruiting, and I would feel very confident with either of these, either of the presentations that came tonight. I was very comfortable with both of them.
Okay, Neil, what do you think?
I was comfortable with both of them too, and my, my edge, I think, is the familiarity and the fact that we have somebody that we've worked with as the point person in this process. Um, I think dovetails everything well.
Nice, yeah.
And, and I really think that anybody who would serve on the committee, um, would be happy with either one of the representatives from the companies, but, um, again, Dorothy is going to be able to provide some insight to that diverse group, um, maybe a little bit more thoroughly than somebody just walking into the situation.
Right, right.
Cause they needed, they need to get educated themselves.
That ramp up time, right, right.
They need to get educated themselves to fully understand.
Right. Kathy?
I'm not done with mine, no.
Yeah, Mark, okay. Somebody wanna make a motion?
I move that we ask MASC to be our superintendent search firm.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. So Kathy, go ahead and, please.
So I'll leave you in touch, and I'll contact, I'll set foot in.
Yeah, just take care of it, finish it up.
And we have.
Okay, items for next agenda. Um, we'll go, we'll get through that. I think that's it.
Do we have executive session?
We have executive session. Does someone, man, wanna make a motion to?
I move we adjourn the regular business session and go into an executive session. For the purpose of discussion, collective bargaining strategies, after we convene to open session.
Thank you. So, can I have a second? Thank you, holy cow, you guys are all right.
You're welcome.
You have to pull.
Yes.
Oh, are you doing, I'm sorry, she was writing, I'll do it.
Oh.
I'm leaving this now.
She's doing it.
Are you doing?
After you pull.
The.
Okay, yeah, this is open session, you have to do it after.
Okay, all right, okay, then, I'll let you roll call it.
I don't know if you motion needs to be made, I need to come to your executive session.
Oh, just, just.
What do you mean?
Oh, we don't have to roll call?
I need to come to your executive session.
Yeah, you just have to go around, yeah.
Aye.
We, we might need to amend that motion. Can you say?
I just, I don't know if you need to, in the past you've done, I need to come to your executive session?
Oh, do you?
Oh, we, right, start it over then, do it again, cause it's messy. Sorry.
Okay, I move we, um, adjourn the regular session and go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining strategies. Um, and we will include, uh, George King as part of the executive session, and we will not reconvene to open session.
Perfect. In a second. Kathy, just a second. Oh, my lord.
Aye.
All those in favor? Oh, are we doing a roll call?
We do, we roll call.
Did you say aye and yes?
Yes, for Mark.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Phew. Thank you.
We're all set, yeah, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you Tuesday.
Very good.
We got your day packed.